At this time, I would like to call the policy committee meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call Brennaman.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Rose, would you like to? Kick it off?
You betcha. You betcha. If if.
And I'd like to, I'd like to apologize. I had. I well, we had it scheduled at the last meeting and then I. Noticed that I know that we rescheduled and I didn't get it at the new time down in my calendar correctly, so. I apologize for that.
No worries, Mr. President. Um, I believe we are picking up at ten dot zero two, ten dot zero one, ten dot zero one.
Ten dot zero two.
That's right, okay, ten dot zero two. Okay, and so, um, I don't know if anybody had any. Yeah, questions, comments, or anything on the first part of this section, the first couple of. Of lines of this section. I've got a couple of edits to make, but I I defer to other. Uh, board members if they have any, if they have any input.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so on the second um line. Where it begins for a customer to be eligible, that's that's it right there, yep. Um, I think in the second line there, I would strike. The E P P after the word following and be between the word following and requirements. Because we we say it right before that. And so I don't think it's necessary right there.
Right, so yeah, just you scratch the E P P and just have it uh must meet the following requirements.
And then I assume for the two bulleted items that. Um, that those both of those bulleted items are required, correct? They have to be at the at the current ad, their present address for twelve consecutive billing periods and they must have a zero balance, is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and so what I would do after. Um, well, number one, I would, I would write the numeral twelve instead of the word twelve. And then I would put a semicolon after periods, strike the period and enter a semicolon. And put and comma. And and the rest of that I think is is good. Uh, I did have one question on the zero balance. And and that is, a- and this may just be a logistical nightmare and 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 so you. Janetta may say to me, Rose, why would you even say that? Because it's a logistical nightmare, so please. If um. If the customer is in a uh payment arrangement. And they are current on their payment arrangement. I- is that something that could be considered? Instead of just the zero balance to enroll an E P P?
Oh, I will say this, I would say I do not think that is possible. One, because we're saying that this person, that the account. May be in delinquency. For over twelve, for over uh six months, because we're allowing them to make a payment arrangement and. And spread it over six months, so there could be quite a bit of delinquency um involved in that. But I will offer this up if if it would help, is that they not be, they don't have to be at a zero balance, but they could take one bill. With them into the equal payment plan.
A current bill.
No, not not a current.
This is not a past due balance, is what you're saying.
Well.
New bill hasn't come out yet, so.
It could be passed if the bill hasn't come out yet, they could still take that one bill with them if they have one. One past due bill and they want to get on that, so it could be in that little strange period. Between do and the next bill coming and they get on payment arrangements.
Do you have a question on prior edit too? So in all the other examples, we have a year, a number called out, we type out the word and then. Put the number in parentheses, so should we do that to the phone as well?
I think it's redundant to do both.
But that's, I know others disagree with me.
So to be consistent, are you saying we need to go back and change all of them to one way or the other?
If if it's if it's numerals one to ten, right, one one to nine, they are generally typed out. If it's ten or above, if it's two digits or above, they're generally listed numerically. And so that may need to be form, you know, normalized throughout the document.
Right, but you don't need both numerical.
I don't.
And thank you.
Anything we can do to save characters as we keep.
Probably.
That's one there, that one.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
Okay, I I everything just went blank there for a minute, quiet, so maybe just everybody stop talking.
Okay, so you're thinking that. Um, so they could bring one bill, maybe the bill's late, maybe it's not. Cause I'm just trying to think of how to word that. So so prior to enrollment in the E P P.
Because even if the new bill, we still don't let the current bill.
We could just say current bill. Because even if it's delinquent, it's still your, yeah, and the new bill hasn't come out, it's still the current bill.
So.
It'd be like if somebody's moving, it'd be the same thing.
So Rob, I think if if we change the language there, sort of we flip flop the language a little bit. Um, and just say prior to enrollment in the E P P. A customer. Must have either. And however, this is going to wind up being normalized, it can either be, you know, a sub, little A. Parentheses, a romanate one parentheses, I I don't care what. Well, maybe not a bullet. No, that would be what I'm trying to get away from.
Uh, I can change this to A B C.
No, 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 it, yeah, and we we know the whole document's going to be normalized at some point, so. So either a zero balance. Yeah, uh, semicolon or comma. And then B or whatever the thing's going to be, um. One outstanding bill, I I don't know how to refer to a janetta in the best way.
We would, I'd like to keep it with the current bill.
Okay.
I know we're using current in thinking that current may be past the due date, which makes it delinquent, but it's still their current bill that they have, there's not a new bill yet.
So they, help me unpack that a little bit, they could be in a payment plan, but they would have, no.
Because they wouldn't have, they'd be beyond their current bill.
They can owe their current bill, but nothing else, okay, thank you.
One current bill owing.
A current.
To sign up.
A current, but not more than one current, but we we want to make sure it's just one, it can't be multiple.
You can only have one current bill, you can only have, but a current. And two bills outstanding, it's not.
Current charges.
Cause you could sit there and say, I have three months of charges on here, but hey, I only want to take this current bill, which has it in there, I wake up.
Yeah, that's what was confusing me, because if I were a customer reading it and said, I have a zero balance or one current bill, I'd go, great, I have a current bill, I guess I'm eligible.
It has to have charge store on there, plus the current charges.
So we can just define current bill in the definitions.
Or we, they they can't have a balance greater than one month's charges.
Well, I like that. Did you hear that, Rose?
I I did, and I'm good with that conceptually, sure.
The only problem that I see with that is our non-shoulder months, so our winter and our summer months.
Higher or lower?
Yeah, so a month's charges is inconsistent throughout the year.
Right.
So if a, if a customer has a bill to say.
And this goes back to the last meeting.
Very rarely, it's possible for a care, for somebody to get two bills in one month, right?
So not so much get two bills, but pay two bills in one.
Yes, or pay two bills.
Right, okay, so if they don't see the first one, second one is doing the same month, they don't pay that, so this makes them ineligible.
Automatically, right, you have to pay one and then carry the other one into equal payment plan.
If you're saying one month's charges though, and you wind up having.
You could say one month's. We could say one month's usage.
Well, I'm I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure we think this thing always through.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like cycle one, we tend to like have a bill due in first of March and then March type stuff, but you still build in February and. Just when the due date is.
I'm okay with what's up there, I just wanted to make sure I walk through, we walk through uh what could, what could possibly happen and then. What customers may turn around and bring back to us.
Well, what could possibly happen is what happened to me, I had a credit balance and was denied getting on the E P P.
Oh, okay.
What did matter?
They told me I couldn't, I had to have a zero balance and. And uh. Uh, I had a like it, I was, at that period of time, there's, I don't know, E R C, something happened, whether, and everybody got like a small credit. And I ended up having a credit of like five or six dollars. And uh, you know, they said, I'm sorry, you gotta have a zero balance, you can't get on the equal payment plan, and I totally could take the six dollars. And spend it however they wanted to, just jimmy me out.
So that's been taken care of, that that isn't. One of those things.
Yeah, I, and who, the representative, the representative that day, I said, called me back about an hour later and said, well, I talked to my supervisor. And they said, because you have a. Credit or we owe you and you, you know, we wouldn't go ahead and put you on the equal payment plan, but it just so long as everybody. Understands that and they don't get, that is a confusion.
I don't think it was the intent of so, of point B, but I think that actually does encompass that situation, because the credit would be.
Can we just explicitly say? You know, or a credit?
Or positive balance.
I would, I would include it.
Is that the right term?
Or credit.
No, credit balance, we need to get. What do you say, not having it?
I don't think this prohibits it, I mean, I'm not sure.
It doesn't, and it was just, it was at the time, that was something that was just misunderstood, once I spoke to the supervisor, supervisor, let them know, it doesn't happen. So we don't run into that issue anymore, so I'm not sure that we needed to put it in the policies.
I agree, because it was an issue.
So you won't run into it in the future.
But but this doesn't prohibit you from putting them on.
Yes, it doesn't, and so.
Customer, I'm not sure if that, if this prohibits me or not.
Uh, I'm I'm in the same way, that's why. I uh, I have no problem putting it in there, just just for clarity purposes.
I wouldn't put that as a C, but but as an additional sentence there and. Yeah, I I mean, conceptually, I think that's fine, I think, we'll we'll clean this up, Rob, I but I think it's fine. On the, uh, the sentence, the sentence that begins. The monthly amount payable may be adjusted from time to time, where time to time is struck, yeah, that sentence, um. I I would propose to change um where it says to reflect. And. In place of that, put based on applicable. And then, you know, leave the rest of it the same.
And we strike any. Unapplicable rate changes.
Yes, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
I ask a question, in the example where you're going to allow a customer to carry one bill into the E P P. They're still going to get billed at the same time every single month, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so if they are past their due date, but haven't gotten a second bill yet, will every future bill payment be past their bill date? Will that kick them out of the E P P? No, surely not, okay, I just want to make sure.
So what I understood, sorry, what I understood on this is this is just for them to be eligible to sign up for E P P, like they're still going to have to pay that bill, that current bill. And then this is just going to allow them to sign up without having to have the zero balance.
I just noticed, thank you.
Yeah.
So they would pay that outstanding bill, and then from that point forward.
Then their next bill will be on the level payment.
Would you state that they need to pay that bill?
But this is just, I thought, that's what I understood. Oh, I understood that this was just in order for them to be eligible to sign up for it.
And that would be then this month going forward, right, they they would then have their, they just needed to know, so we can go ahead and calculate. What will be dealing your future E P P amounts, it would include you not paying that bill.
Yeah, like A C H, we'll sign you.
So you're not including that amount in the E P P amount then?
Right, it will be like wrapped in, so, well.
It can be calculated in there, but it doesn't prevent them from paying that amount, because it would, we have to. If we're using twelve months, we have to use all consumption back for twelve months and calculate it into that, but it doesn't. Exclude them from going ahead and making that payment, because the next amount is not going to be due until there, she's always going to use twelve.
So if I'm, if I'm a customer and it's July and I get a really high bill. And it's bill fifteen for me, so I have at least twelve months, and I call and say I want to be put on this. Do I have to pay that big bill, or can that go ahead and be calculated and put me on the average plan, so that bill now becomes average? Because that's, it's put into there.
But it, it doesn't exclude you from paying your bill that month, just like being on E P P doesn't.
I realize that, but say I get, because July, July is a hot month, I ran my air conditioner, had a lot going on, so that bill is higher. Instead of paying that bill, I call and say I want E P P, and it would average my bill and reduce that, so now I pay the new E P P. Rate versus paying that bill off, is that, is that not what happens?
I'm, no, I'm going to say that is not what happens.
Okay.
Uh, where I would figure that, because we we're, we try to have, you're supposed to pay a payment even to get on payment arrangement, you have to pay a payment every thirty days. And so if you don't pay it, then that means that you haven't paid since the last time.
Begin it on schedule, but begin it with a estimated equalized payment, so you're still paying that lot.
I'm getting a a two hundred and fifty dollar bill for July, and I call and say I want to be put on E P P, and my E P P. Is one twenty. Can that new bill be put into the E P P and I just pay the one twenty instead of the two fifty? And so it's rolled in, I've met the twelve.
That's the system does, so you're saying.
That's what I didn't know.
Like I said, we have to check with Steffi, because the system doesn't currently, I believe, work like that, however, we would.
So would you, so on the due date, you're saying instead of paying the two fifty, you'd pay the one twenty?
The app, yeah.
So I think it depends on when the bill is generated and when the customer calls in, if we would have the opportunity to cancel and rebuild.
One more, if you're past the due date.
If you're past the due date, then for sure.
That, okay, it can't go back and put that into the E P P.
I don't believe.
New amount, okay.
We can double check, so. And I believe that's one of the reasons why we always started out with such a slow balance, so.
Yes, probably, yes.
Probably we need to check, uh, we need to check to see if it is a mutation. Can't say.
My monthly E P P is uh adjusted every six, every six months, it changes.
Right.
Is that re, it it's not like, uh, you know, maybe, uh, you know, uh, maybe adjusted or. To reflect any rate changes, because every six months, it's automatically adjusted. And comes out as a new rate for the next six months.
But if there's a rate change somewhere in there, is it adjusted more frequently than six months?
For as long as I've been on it, it's never, the, you know, the rate changes have, they have not, never affected it, it's only. Basically, your, you know, your consumption, I would, I would guess, but it could be the ra, the rate change, uh, you know. What your monthly bill is, but it's automatically done every six months.
Is that, is that how how it's intended to to work?
Yes.
That's how it works, I don't.
Yes, currently, it's intended to readjust every six months. To kind of take into account the seasonal highs and lows.
So it used to be annually.
Yes.
And we've gone to six months, oh, it's been a long time.
Been a long time, right?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking is, why don't we just say that, it'll be a. Maybe adjusted, you say it will be adjusted on, you know, six months to reflect or to whatever words you want to. Uh, consumption history. Change your balance changes, that's what.
Yeah, and the reason why we didn't um put a time limit on there is, as far as I know, we've done this on a lot of our policies. Is if you put that in there, it doesn't allow for some changes, and there had been a discussion before where we had thought about even doing it. Every quarter, every three months, and so this allows us, if we ma- make a decision, like we did going from twelve months to six months. To do that without changing our policies, it just gives you flexibility.
But a- and I hear you on that, but but the problem is, is if I'm a customer who, if I'm Tom. Brett, we're, we're taking you out of the equation this week, we're going to use Tom as your example. On E P P, Tom, you're not dead, so you're just. I mean, you're on a P for certainty, right, or for some semblance.
Right.
And so. I understand that B P U may want to change it, but I need to know at what interval it's going to be changed. If it's twelve months, if it's six months, if it's four months, and again, I understand the need for flexibility, but. The whole reason for E P P is to try to get a cer, you know, some semblance of a certain bill.
Yeah, and if you change it, you know, if you change it every month, then why have an E P P?
Right.
Well, the only pushback I'd have on that is it's not getting changed, I mean, they. It is, I I don't know, I mean, I suppose it doesn't hurt to make the language match, but it's not like someone is signing up for it, thinking it's going to change every six months. Cause that's what they read on the website, and then rug's being pulled out from underneath them, it's not being changed every month.
Okay. And ours is, ours is a, ours is an equal payment plan, um, with some of the utilities, um, especially we're talking with the K C C. Theirs is an average.
Yeah.
Payment plan, and so basically, the one I have, it does vary every month by some amount, it does, it's not equal like ours. It does vary every month, now, we can change that to average, but I I think people are comfortable with it being an equal payment plan and knowing exactly what they're going to pay. With a lot of them, they don't say equal, they say average.
Yeah.
And then they are adjusted, because what they do is they do take your twelve months, and that is the amount you pay. The next month, what they do on mine is they drop the first month, they add on the past month, so it's a rolling twelve, and they add it, and then they divide that by twelve. And then that's the new amount I pay, so ours continues to change. Um, and and for our equal pay, it stays the same, and I think, I think we're comfortable, uh, when a person asks about it, or they say they want to sign up. It's on our website, I believe Gabby said too, that it's the six months, so if we were ever to change it, I think we could change it in those areas, it's easier to change than having a whole policy change. Going back and presenting that and changing it, this just gives a little bit more flexibility, but you know, whatever you guys want to do is fine.
Do you ever redone a calculation out of this? If they feel like their usage is dropping month to month, do they?
Oh, no. No, that, they would have to wait to the next calculation.
So it changes, uh, January, July?
No, it's six months from when they sign up.
If you get on February, it could be August.
And it, and it does reflect the changes, I I think my mom's just changed in in, and February something, and this last, this last one included her. Summer months, and so it went up, I mean, I get this call, or, yeah, Janet, what's wrong, why did it go up? So that's what it's going to reflect, it went up a little bit, now, once her next one is calculated, it'll include the summer, the winter months. And it's going to go down, and that's kind of what people are used to, it kind of, if if the, the twelve months starts including those high months, like Mark said. It does, yes.
I would, I would think for some customers, and I was thinking it was, those periods were set, but if it's when they sign up. That it would uh take those high summer, high winter months, potentially on when they sign up. You kind of even that out better than trying to do it across a whole year.
And and that's one of the reasons why we changed it from the year people saw too mu, too much of a swing. It was weight, and and that was uncomfortable for some people, thinking, I started out here, now, oh my gosh, it just went up too high, so doing it six months. Really helps them to know. One, one six months to be a little higher, one to be a little bit.
They could possibly break up those harsh summer months and put them. Lend them into uh the winter season or order, or the shoulder more months, which is going to be lower.
Rose and Tom, I don't feel terribly strongly on this, but I, I'm comfortable with the current language, I guess, but if you guys. Are more comfortable explicitly saying six months, again, I don't, I don't have a strong objection to that. I do.
Thank you, Tom.
Hear a little bit of a concern of. If that ever needs to change, that we need to open, reopen this document, but.
I, you know, I. I I think that, well, it, you really. You, I'm I'm accustomed to it, I real, I know that it changes every s, every six months, even though it doesn't say that in the policy. But so I'm, I could go either way, but I was just wanted to throw that out there, that it is, it is changed every six months, it's not. As as determined basis by.
Sure, is that language for us, changing it more than twice a year or something like that, if that's, that's a goal.
I don't have a big dog in the fight, but I just don't like the wording of letter B, it's very subjective. to the, that person's viewpoint. In my mind.
Oh, uh. Balance greater than one month?
Yes.
Can you say not have a balance greater than the most recent month?
Because I mean, what's considered a month, well, a balance, one month. I mean, is it your balance, my balance? A corporate's corporation's balance? I mean, it's.
Your bill.
You, you can open it up to many different ideas of it.
The most recent bill.
I just.
That's, yeah.
We've got a, I just, I don't like that wording. I think we need to clean that, but we can move forward, but just know to come back to it.
Well, I didn't know that this language needs to be cleaned up.
You know, and try to come up with, I don't know, maybe one month's usage period or something, or most current use, I don't know.
I like when we use current.
Current usage period.
It's like you were saying, if it's that current.
So Tom and Rose, can you hear the conversation in the room?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, it's been the past month, the current.
But we can, we can come.
Months charges.
Our most recent month.
What? I think is even then you can, I can look at my bill and say, here's my previous charges right here. Well, here's my current charges. Well, this is what I want to include is current charges. Well, includes the previous.
Right.
So that's why it's.
Right, exactly. And I understand what you're saying because if I look at my bill and I'm carrying a balance from the month before, that's my.
That's.
That's my current, my charges. I mean, that's what I owe for that month, but even though there's a delinquent amount that's included in that.
So that's.
I'll have to think about it and try to. Nice. Tell me this might be a terrible idea, so I won't be offended. But the goal is at some point before they begin the twelve months equalized payment, their account actually had a final zero balance, right? What we're saying is if they can proactively sign up for that pending the payments of whatever outstanding single bill that they have. So we could say something like they must have a zero balance and then just a note, customers may, I don't know. I don't know if tentatively is the right word, but you can do the enrollment process, but it will not actually kick in until you have paid.
Not effective until outreach is.
Yeah, but, but like the reserve of, reserve, but reverse of Tom's situation, say it's not a credit, but he had a
Right.
of an outstanding bill. He knows he's gonna payment, pay it. He's got a good payment history. It's just, and I've done that because I was, I was enrolled in automatic payments when I first went to sign up for it. I was like, well, I'm it's scheduled to be paid, but there, so I don't know that.
And that's.
I threw it a little bit, but ultimately it won't go into effect until your balance is zeroed out.
And I, I, I agree because we were talking about this on, on the way down. If a person, um, if, if I get my bill and I pay it right away, I can call and do that. But let's say that a person is wanting to pay that bill. It may be delinquent at this point. They go ahead and pay it prior to disconnection. So the bill's paid, but their next bill is probably gonna come out, what, the next week? The next week?
Could be, yeah.
Yes.
Or you're.
Given a short period of time that they can sign up because it has to, right? When it goes to zero, if your bill is gonna, and you may not do it in that time period. So your next bill comes out right before you, and that's what we wanted to make immense. Like even if that bill has come out, we can go ahead and set you up.
And that's what you made an excellent, excellent point of broad auto pay. Well, my bill's getting paid in three days and you just signed me out as soon as it goes to zero.
Now, before I create problems for you all, if I, if, let's say we put that language in and go back to my situation. I was on auto pay. I was signing up for E P P online. I wasn't calling in and having someone schedule it to go into effect. Would I be able to do that online? Or it would just be, hey, you're hitting the sand with that and you call in, they'll be able to set that up for you.
So certainly what it does is it sends a task to the billing department to review the account.
Okay.
Anyway, so it will tell you that you are, I don't want to say is that you are signed up, but that, you know, we have received the request.
Okay, yeah.
And then we will review it. And if there's issues, I believe we contact the customer. You guys do that.
There's some reason, uh, the billing department can't, they notify me and then I contact.
Yeah, okay. So it doesn't, it wouldn't throw a giant.
It doesn't immediately do it, which just puts in a task and then billing does review.
And I'm saying that very rarely, I think, since we put this, when do we do this in eighteen, when we did the bill pay? I think I've only had the email like four customers. It's not, it's not.
Cause we do have wordings out there to try to.
I was gonna say, now that, now that you say it that way, I think I probably just looked at it and said, oh, I don't have a zero balance. I'll wait until this date in the month to sign up. There might have to be a small tweak. I don't know if the website language, but at least not changing a giant process.
We can definitely tweak that before, uh, the new one. You're just.
This, uh, this change will require a change.
Janata, do you have, or do you guys have, um, um, percentage of customer base that's on E P P or number of customers or anything like that? Do you have a ballpark?
Uh, ballpark is like a couple thousand, I think. So it's well, I'd say less than one percent. Oh, wait, no, hold on.
No, no.
That'd be six hundred. So hold on. I'd say probably less than five percent.
Okay. I mean, for me, that puts a lot into perspective. I know we're trying to get this right, but.
I, I don't believe it's like ten percent or say sixty-five hundred or anything like that. I want to say it's, listen, I want to say two or three thousand. I'm probably off on that, but, uh.
We have uh, from February, which would be our January, our January numbers, fourteen thousand one thirty-two.
On E P P?
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, 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 no. I'm sorry. That was E bill, that was our E bill customers. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
I saw E and it all looked the same this morning. E P P, E bill. Yep.
When was the last time you had seen a customer service?
I think it was in, it's, wasn't it?
What customer service? It's stats?
Did we go over it in December?
Uh, no. I don't think you did the E P P. I don't. That's what we do is.
That's why we're doing this.
I can, oh, oh.
As an aside, we only have fourteen thousand customers that receive E bills.
Yes. Now you know that happens.
Fourteen thousand on.
Fourteen thousand on E bill.
Fourteen thousand on E bill.
E bill.
Wow.
So Steffi, how many are on?
Yeah. And we've held steady at that number for a while.
We offer it on every call. E P P?
No.
When they call customer service.
I don't know if we've ever given stats on how many are on E P P.
I think so.
I don't think we, coming, I don't think we have focused on, we focus more on how many are paying automatically and stuff like that versus, uh.
Is that something could, that could be pulled out of the system?
Oh.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Yes, we can get that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a fluctuating number, just like, you know, E bill or uh, bank draft or automatic payment, whatever Lori says is the correct way to say it.
Bank draft.
Bank draft. I mean, it's ebbs and flows.
E bill just mean they pay online.
E bill, you get it.
Paperless.
You get a paperless. Well, you can get it through the mail.
Have you signed?
It has nothing to do with how you pay.
Some of us have been attempting to sign up for that and it keeps telling me it's not working right.
Online?
Mm-hmm. I buy paper, cause I pay online, but I receive a paper bill and I go on, try and.
And you would rather have it on.
Let me.
Uh, well, I mean, I, it's automatically paid online. So the bill comes in the mail and I open it.
Just out of curiosity, is it failing when you're trying to validate your email?
Yeah, and I've tried to.
What?
Sorry, this does not have to be.
No, 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 I, I.
For Brett.
I know this is, is it a Gmail?
Then Gmail in my work email, I think.
Okay, that's.
Okay, sorry.
I didn't realize. Uh, if you don't mind, could I look at your.
Yes.
Okay. Me, cause I, I have heard of a couple.
Yes.
Uh, but it's not something we hear about continually. So I think it was just a one office.
I'm happy to raise that number by one, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can sign you up, even if you can't do it, but let's test your account, so.
Sorry, Tom and Rose, I'm done.
Is the new portal active yet? No, you're fine.
Okay.
Not, yeah, not yet.
Do we have a date?
Rob, what's the current date for my meter?
Yes.
April twenty-ninth.
Okay. And, well, Brett got to have one question, so I'll ask one. Um, if I'm reading, do I have to re-sign up for that? Even though I'm already in the system electronically under, for our account?
Yes, because it's the new portal, so you'll need to sign up for the new portal. Uh, we're not, we don't have the ability to bring your passwords over. So you have to set, sign up for a new shop.
But I can't do that yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. We gonna tell customers when we can do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Or we just, it forces me to do it.
It's something already go out.
But so once we have our.
Rose, I didn't hear your last question. Could you restate it?
She said, are we gonna tell customers when the portal's available?
Yes, so two weeks prior to, uh, review, so as soon as I can pass a validation and get sign off to executive leadership, then if you're asked to present. Sure, we're going to be successful. Um, then we will initiate the communication plan two weeks prior to cut over. Uh, Nick and David have been working on it for a couple of months now, so I think they've got everything that they need. Um, and so that will be our communication for two weeks. We've already put a message out on C S S to let them know it's coming. We just haven't set an expecta- an expectation, um, because we have to pass validation first.
But until it goes live on the twenty-ninth, customers won't be able to sign up for my meter.
Correct.
Boy, I don't envy you guys in customer service for that one.
Yeah.
We've gone through the signup process several times, trying to make sure it'll be as successful as possible and it gives as much instruction as possible on the screen. Uh, but yeah, we are expecting an increase in calls every month.
Well, and I mean, look, I, um, I pay more attention to B P U stuff than probably the average, um, customer does. And I still had to ask you when it was coming out and also, I, you know, I mean, customer communication is difficult enough as it is, right? And, yeah, anyway, I, I digress, sorry. Um.
And Rose, just to, just to update you on that number, I have already, with the, uh, we provided in. And in, so in December, it was thirty-three ninety-three and now it's thirty-seven hundred.
So I need to.
On, on E P P.
That just gives you a little idea from December to, to March now.
Sure, Rose.
I did. Thank you. Um. Okay, so I think we're down to the E P P will continue automatically. That section there. Did Brett or Tom, did either of you have any input into that section?
Uh, no.
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay, um, I have a question about the third bullet. And so if a customer has pays their E P P bill late one time, they are assessed late fee charges that they pay. They can still be terminated from the E P P program. Is, is that, am I reading that correctly?
It says May, so is there some discretion exercised in whether or not to terminate the E P P and that, like, if it's like a situation like Rose saying, right? They kind of assess the AP, paid it right away.
They would not be taken off E P P. It's if they pass, so they'll get the same message that customers do if their bill's late. They have to pay it by this date to avoid disconnection. So if they don't pay the E P P with the late fee by that day, then they could remove, be removed from the equal payment form.
Okay.
There's a bit of a grace period then.
Yes, yes.
Well, but it's subjective, right? So I don't know if I can have, I, I don't know if I'm, you know, again, if, if I'm a late payer, but I always pay my late fees. You know, I understand I'm not, you know, a model customer to, to Lori, but I'm still on the E P P, I'm paying it, I'm, I'm, I'm taking my lumps, I'm ta- I'm, you know, I'm paying the late fees, which are not insignificant. I'm not ever being disconnected, but I can still be terminated from the level pay program.
I was just gonna say, it sounds like the practice isn't really subjective, right? Like, like you get the phrase period. Pay it or not, but to Rose's point, you're, the language that we're currently looking at implies subjectivity, I guess. So Rose, are you okay with that practice if we made the language reflect it, that you know, the payment is late, you get assigned the late fee, you have a chance to pay it. We just make the language on that third bullet point more accurately reflect that it's not someone just making an individual judgment call on whether or not you're gonna continue on E P P. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but I, I still don't know what the criteria are, right? I don't know if the criteria is I made one late payment. I, I have two late payments in a twelve month span. I mean, we spell that out in other places for other things, right? That trigger other things.
I'm, I'm sorry, Rose, did you hear what Gabby said? As long as you, I'm sorry, then when you get the bill, they'll give you the late payment amount and tell you what, you know, when it would be disconnected. If it's not paid, as long as it's paid prior to that disconnection, then you just pay your E P P and the late payment charge. Yeah, I mean, if you did that every month, it's fine. Is, but if you, the service, you go past that date and the service gets disconnected.
Well, so isn't this really, isn't the disconnection the actual trigger here and not the, the, the timely failing to make timely payments? Because I can be a late payer plus pay my late fees and not be disconnected, and those are still not timely payments.
Um, I, I guess that would be that.
But like, if someone literally does that every month.
By on or before the due date. That's when it, that's what a timely payment is. I mean, that's what Lori, I think, would say it is.
And, and we do want to encourage that, but I think what we're saying is the grace that's given is that if it, if you do, if it does go past the due date and you have a late payment charge, it's paid prior to a disconnection. Your E P P continues.
Would it, without changing any of the practices, be simpler just to say if you experience a disconnection while on E P P, E P P will be discontinued? I'm not trying to change the practice or box you all in on anything.
Or eligibility.
Is the trigger going to be eligibility for disconnection?
That's exactly, I said eligibility for disconnection. Yeah, yeah, so that is correct. It is.
If the account becomes eligible for disconnection, then E P P.
Yes.
Terminated.
That's correct.
And that's in place of the fourth line, uh, the fourth bullet instead of their brackets.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Wait, say that again, Rob. Wouldn't.
So we're talking about adding, uh, if the account is eligible for disconnection, uh, even if you're terminated, we're talking about the fourth bullet, Ross, third, correct?
Oh, I think that would replace the third because.
If a payment is returned, they will pick it up. In payment place.
The customer becomes eligible for disconnection.
The E P P may be terminated.
The amount due on the bill. So I think you can go all the way up to that comma after rendered. Customer. And not to belabor this point, we're saying, coming at this from the perspective of they become eligible for disconnection because of not making a payment. This is a little bit more inclusive, but I'm assuming if they're eligible for disconnection because of, I don't know, fraud or anything else, this would still apply to, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, it should be inclusive. With that, then just cover all scenarios then. There, we do do disconnections at customers' request or for fire and safety. Do we want to say eligible or?
Involuntary?
Due to non-payment.
Are eligible for disconnection due to non-payment?
Well, also.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So in, I like involuntary.
Voluntary disconnection.
Not on their terms. Take it out of there.
Is the fourth point still needed?
A return payment is separate from.
Thank you. Would it be appropriate to change the name to will?
In both of them?
No, not in the fourth one, we're sorry, we're. We're just chatting about if there ever a situation where there's a return payment and they're not removed. If it's. Yeah. Automatic.
If it was returned, then we do tend to remove them, so I.
We don't have any situation that we can.
Are you okay with that, Angie?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we had, we had a lot of will in there in the past, and we changed them all to may.
Sorry.
So I just wanted to make sure it's okay.
Yeah. Right, I mean, there might be something that. You know.
It's it's returned and it may, it may be a special.
And I think, and I think that's why you had us change it, because like if the payment gets returned and it's by the fault of the bank or something happened, then. We tend to get those situations, but it's if you, if we receive something on bank letterhead that states that it was some kind, and. Then we, we change that, they don't, they don't get those issues.
Yeah.
I mean, if there are those other circumstances, I'm not pushing hard for that change, I want it to be as specific as it can be, but if.
Right.
There are multiple things that need to be covered, then.
And so I think it, I I think this is what we lend that to, if we say will, then customers will expect that. If there's those other situations that we're talking about, we can address those, so if we say will, it will cover most of the customers that. Have their check returned because of insufficient funds or things, you know, closed accounts or things like that. But if we, we can address those other other situations. Because they're, you know, they fall outside.
Is it less of a headache for the folks answering these calls? For the customer to read it as this will happen, and then if there are special circumstances, you can. I I just didn't know which way is easier to do the explanation, but yeah, it may be easier if they.
Right.
Go in with that mindset.
Because if it's will, normally a customer will call and say, but this happened, so when they tell us what happened, we we know if it's one of those situations that we can make that adjustment.
That makes sense to me, and Angie, you're okay with that?
I am.
Tom and Rose, are you okay then switching that?
Yeah.
May, will.
Yeah.
Fourth one?
Yeah.
And and I don't know if we want to insert it here, because I think we're gonna talk about this a little ways down. Under returned item, but um. I- is there a way to carve out? You know, if if the return payment. Is, you know, anything other than customer caused, right? I mean, if it's, if it's customer caused. Then we will remove them from the EPP. But, you know, to your point, the exceptions that, you know, are taken into consideration. You know, if if it's a bank issue, you know. You know, they're, the, an account was, you know, misappropriated or, right, I mean, something like that where you guys will take. You know, something on bank letterhead, et cetera. I I don't know if that's worthwhile to carve out here or not, but like I said, we may be talking about it a little bit ways down, so. Prob- probably good just to keep a note there on that, Rob, and and we can move on from from that um bullet.
Yeah, Rose, my only fear there would be a customer's interpretation of what is caused by them. Might be different than ours sometimes. But I I get what you're trying to clarify there, so yeah, circle back.
Right, because if like, if if their employer missed a paycheck to them or something like that, they may consider that not their responsibility, but they also don't have the money to pay them, right? Which is.
Not great all around.
Okay, so the very. Hang on.
So if we change the prior amount to allow them to carry one month in, would we allow them to carry one month back in? See if it's true behavior.
Well, into the conversation before, like.
They're bringing it to zero.
They, they ultimately have to bring it to zero before it begins again anyway.
Um, at the very end of that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, if a customer is terminated uh from the EPP. And in this, the last sentence there, that they have to uh. Pay the balance or kind of the zero balance in order to be reinstated, is there a timeframe? Between when they're terminated and when they can get back on the EPP? Or can they just, if they're terminated, then they bring their account in the the zero, they can get automatically back on it? Or is there a period of times, a year, six months?
There's no time periods.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Rose.
Um, on that last sentence there, um. Not married to this, but. In order to be reinstated to the payment program, I would either make that. The capital equalized payment program or capital EPP. Because payment program is. Sort of generic.
We're already using EPP, let's.
Yeah.
Run with that.
Just, are you saying just to end it at reinstated?
It's just, instead of saying payment program, just say EPP.
To EPP or to the EPP?
Yeah.
To the, as if you say equal payment program.
Yeah.
To the.
Those programs should be.
Um. Okay. Uh, despite the soft opening of. The lobby window. Or some. Partial opening of a lobby, I think we all agreed that. The per- purpose of that function is to not take payments, so I think it's, it's correct to still strike that.
Agreed.
We're good with ten oh three.
But up, up above that. Up above that, Rob? Um, okay, so due date. This is one where I recommend that we actually. Define due date. You know, capital D, capital D, we'll define it in the definition. And make this verbiage here just shorter. And basically, we're just gonna say that, you know, payment must be received by KCPU on or before the applicable due date.
Do I take it capitalized to or just to?
At capital, yeah, the. The the sentence should just now read, payment must be received by KCP, by KC BPU. Yeah, the language is actually in there already. So payment must be, that, yep, start, yep. I I would just take out the and just cap, begin with P, capital P, payment.
Or you define due date in our definitions.
Right. So I would make. On or before the indicated due date. So add due before date and make that capital, due date capital.
But making that to. Definitions.
And I would like just a tiny ounce of credit for making that one shorter. Cause I do so many other things longer.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Maybe noted wasn't exactly a nice thing to say.
Are there authorized payment here? And if we go down, sorry. Down to where we're Dropbox. Is there a Dropbox at KCBP, is there also a Dropbox at five forty in addition to a kiosk?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. If I'm a customer, do I know what IVR stands for?
Probably not.
I don't know what IVR stands for, if that's all. Thank you. I'm not sure the interactive voice response is actually. Can you define that? We can add that, sorry.
Well, and and I think that. I mean, if we're, I I mean, to me, if I'm a customer. If I'm calling over the phone, I don't care. IVR me, means nothing to me, I I'm still paying over the phone.
Yeah, I I'm, I have no problem with it just being phone slash IVR, if we really wanna define IVR. We do have a, you know, coming definitions section.
Right. I agree.
Uh, and so we could give what it actually stands for and then what it is, which is the automated phone, right, that's that's language of the customer.
Yeah, but I, as it's listed here, is fine, because it's with phone. I can use my context. I could decipher it.
I think we added that too, because some people think that when they do call that number that we have HFIBP bill, that they'll be able to talk, they're gonna talk to a live person, and we have to leave that, but it's just.
No, that makes sense.
Were we missing any other payment types, Lori?
So through our online payment processor, they are allowed to pay with Amazon and. And Mo and a couple of other things, but I don't know if we necessarily wanna call those out.
Yeah, because those can change.
So I would just say online and.
Absolutely, I think that covers it.
Agreed.
If they get a new one out there, they put it out there, or they ask us, if we agree to it, they put it out there, so.
I think this is the least confusing way of just about it.
Can I pay my bill at Hen House?
That's, what was that?
Can I pay my bill at Hen House?
Yep, at the kiosk.
They have it.
Okay, those are, those count as authorized kiosks?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
And Tom, yes, we do accept cash, but that would be via the Dropbox, so we don't.
Or in kiosk.
Or in a kiosk.
Don't like cash in the Dropbox.
I'm glad you clarified that within the Dropbox, Lori, because I've never heard a financial person in my life say that they don't like cash.
I I like to keep cash, not have it walk off.
I got it, I got it.
She just likes to control cash.
Bitcoin.
We don't do Bitcoin.
Okay, so in the note section down there. I would add a collection, I would just insert collection of payment. I understand what is intended, but just to be clear.
Is that the same for commercial customers?
Ooh, good question.
What?
Or addition.
All payments are clear.
Not collect any payments, so we wanna change that.
I'll go down to GM and get a big old fat check or.
We just remove residential?
I was wondering, at customers' property, is if it's commercial or residential?
Wouldn't it just be better to keep customers' location if not permitted, because that would cover both their.
True.
Properties, service address or their corporate address?
And we'll end up with a shorter sentence on them.
Rob, you sharp this one.
It must be the jacket.
Yes.
He took the jacket off.
It had to be a special maple doughnut, and I hated it, so I'm running on a sugar high right now. Are you gonna request it? You could request it?
No.
I can.
He said, cause he gets real weak over there typing in all this stuff. I need this maple doughnut.
Okay. I only have one question about ten dot zero five, but I'll defer to. My esteemed colleagues as to whether or not they have any questions or comments or input on ten dot zero five.
We always plan on notifying them in writing, would we ever notify notify them electronic?
In that.
We're making a push to get rid of letters and go towards texting and emails, I'm sorry, Rose, I spoke over you, say that again.
Question I have is this. We say that there's this application, is this application available online?
No.
Is it a form, is it a BPU form?
Yes.
Can you make it available online?
I would love to make all our forms available online, thank you.
Is it a fillable?
It's a request, sorry.
Is it fillable?
That's our best.
It's not, it's not online.
So Jody can make it fillable, and then we can do a link.
Base form, or we could potentially also have further go live on twenty ninth. Build that out in my meter, that they could submit it, and then it would create an issue or a service order in KINTA, but that would be an enhancement, we would have to go through their enhancement.
Would. So I guess my question is, would they have to be registered in order to get to that, or can anyone just go online and be able to do that? I just want them to be able to.
Standard operating for how it's currently set up, they would need to be, have an account in the portal and log into it. Um, we could ask if we can make it available on the landing page or, you know, log in, but I don't know.
I'm thinking that's what Jody can do, right?
Yeah.
So we can put inside or outside, I'd just like it to be available to them.
I agree, online would be good.
And.
And.
And she can turn that around quick.
Outside of having it outside as if someone doesn't normally do any of their account business. Log in online, they don't have to track down a password to get the form or create.
Okay.
And and I think many of our customers, just because they're older, when they find out, we, they're really. Just good with, can you just send it to me, I think that's what we tend to do.
Old.
Is that the?
She's not old.
I would. I said, oh.
If the normal method, someone calls and.
No one said that.
Look, I'm gonna skip having a jump.
And sometimes we don't request it, we make them aware of it, yes.
So I put in a young request to make this application available online without logging into a system for.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Make it easy. So then to your point, do we take out notify in writing? Like if they're submitting it electronically, can we notify them electronically, like with an email? So can we just change that, that customers will be notified, application is approved?
If they provide an email.
As long as we have an email.
Still in writing.
If we have any.
Yeah, but if they're submitting the form via email.
They should.
The BB email might just be an online submit. And you might get an online message.
Add email address to the form.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think.
Notify them if they're denied.
Say that again, Rose.
How about you only have to notify them if they're denied? And that's one less notification, unless you're gonna automate it.
We have been making a push though to send notifications for like when the EPP is active and in force and um. We have been making a push though to send notifications for like when the EPP is active and in force and give me another example.
I'd like their ACH when that's available. Yes, I was gonna say, I, I think customers like communication, so whether they're approved or denied, I think they would wanna know either way. Just then they know it's done.
It's kinda like filing your tax return. You know, you get the acceptance. If you just don't get anything, you just don't know if they've accepted it or not.
I would just want the record to reflect that I think that is an extremely customer friendly approach that you guys have chosen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I retract my suggestion. It's on video. It's been recorded.
But you can't see who it is.
This is Rose Mulvaney Henry. Next circumstance, payment.
Did you take out in writing?
Yeah.
Or is that just?
She was saying that with email, it's not writing.
Yeah, she said text messages to write.
It gives us options on how we notify them if we just take out.
I just saw the highlights. I didn't know what was.
So you. We still would notify them approved or denied, just it gives us the option of how we would notify them. If, for example, if on the form they provided an email address, we could send that electronically versus mail it out.
We could give, I don't think I'd get very wordy with this if we really wanted to.
And so I think Rose stated that email and text messages aren't written.
I mean, Angie, do you agree with that?
I got you. Then I'm good either way. That's.
If the text messages in writing.
It's writing.
It's writing, but it's pretty informal.
It's not oral.
It's not.
True.
Well, if it's spoken into.
I mean, anything that's saving the BPU from having to send out a written letter with postage.
Right.
I think we would prefer, cause that's cost cutting. You're welcome, Lori, but I mean.
I would just think customers will be notified of.
That's where we'll be.
We'll be notified if the application approved or denied. Just take out in writing. Yeah, do it any way you want.
We're just notifying it either way.
Gosh, I was too. I didn't do that.
Yeah. Because. You can, like, if it's an instant.
It's the message.
No, like if you know instantly, just tell them. That's right.
I'd really like to just keep a pop of this. Yeah, it's been accepted.
It's been accepted, right? Like then why would you then? It's been accepted, then have to turn around and send them the same message.
From a project management standpoint, my, my response would be there's a difference between communication documentation, but I feel like we need the customer.
You're not wearing that hat right now, Rob.
Oh, are we good on that?
Yes.
I think so.
Denied. Do we run? Is there any other stat?
She said, what's your question?
I said, is there any other stats between, besides approved and denied? Can't we just say they'll be notified of the results or something?
But it's not, it's not a decision.
That's right.
We don't often have the ability to appeal or anything. We just have to reset.
It was based on. Have to meet the income.
Right, which.
Do they have to continue to approve that they meet income requirements to stay on the program?
Every year, I think.
Hold on.
So I guess one question that Gabby said that I brought this up before Bill wasn't. Yeah, yeah, a long time ago, Bill, prior to you. Does a person after sixty two, do they have to prove they meet the federal income guidelines? I mean, if they apply for the waiver, can we not?
If their income changes.
But if they get an inheritance. Someone dies and they.
Matter? You're just saying if it is free age sixty two, do we just waive all of it? Yes, because remember, remember Bob tried to do that several times. Well, if they apply for.
That was Bob's misunderstanding of the policy and he was doing all his knowledge. But the policy didn't change that.
Yes, it, 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 you did say that it had to be different policy that I'm asking. I'm just bringing that back up. If they request, if a person requested, can, can we, can we give them that after age sixty two? That was, that was the question.
I wasn't for breaking the policy. If the policy needed to change, then okay, but Bob used to call it a senior program.
You want savings for seniors.
I'm sorry.
You wanna do a savings for seniors.
Take it for all seniors.
That doesn't necessarily address who needs it.
Right now.
Because that group is not uniformly situated.
I think to his, I think to his point, people, that people over sixty two or whatever age he deemed that may be struggling, but not quite meet that guideline. Or we make that adjustment based on they quite don't meet that guideline, but they still aren't. Able to, and they've asked us that to get on a specific day. And that's what has normally has happened is people are bound to when they get, they get paid. And he was just saying, and a lot of times we get that, I don't get it to here, my bill is here and we waive it for them because they would get one, they get a late payment charge every month. And that really worries. So anyone that's sixty two that goes to the effort to complete the application. Right, because they probably need it because they're probably getting late payment charges based on when their funds aren't available. So I just wanted to bring this.
So much of what we do in terms of assistance, back to customers, everything else, always has an age in somewhere, federal guideline, poverty guideline. Even the rebate programs and everything else, right? So I guess, I mean, what are we actually trying to do? Just everybody that's over sixty two, we just waive everything?
No.
If you wanna say just close, we could say less than like a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty five percent of the poverty.
Like I said, I think the concern for people with, I don't have the funds available at that time. I always get a late payment charge and that's what we hear all the time and they just.
I mean, the board can do what they, if they would wanna consider changing it, okay, I have, I see no problem with it written.
Well, and that's, that's what I was gonna say is Tom and Brett, I think, you know, we, we may need to discuss this and I don't know. I, I'd like to hear your thoughts on, you know, what, what Jeanetta has proposed and, you know, potential change to. To this, to this policy.
If someone is not currently submitting this application, we don't otherwise know how. Much they've missed cutoff on the federal poverty guideline, right? Like, if you just have someone who is getting a late fee every month, they know they're not eligible for it as it currently stands. I guess what I'm asking, there's no data that says, hey, if we moved it to a hundred and twenty five percent or a hundred and fifty percent, this is how many people we would catch because we just don't.
Don't know that. Yeah. Don't have that.
Unless they're filling out the.
Well, and the poverty amount changes every year.
Well, let's.
Yes, it does.
And so do we make them continue to submit new documentation each year to stay in the program? They only have to meet it once and then they're in it until?
My guy has sixty two. I mean, that's, how many people are retiring at sixty two? Do we wanna keep it there or?
What I will say is this, people that don't need it, don't apply.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
People that don't need it. There are tons of customers we have over sixty two that have never applied. They don't need it. It's, it's the ones that call in and say, I don't get paid. I don't have this. And then we say, well, we have a late payment wherever you can go in and fill that out to see if you qualify. So it's people that are only calling in. Most of the people that don't have issues, they are. So I'm just, I'm just referring to the ones that do call. We are able to.
Yes, I'm, I'm struggling to come up with, is there data that we could look at? Like, is there a number of people who make that request or how?
They probably have the numbers of forms and requests that come in, but we don't have, I don't think we keep their ink.
Right.
And I, I can change that. I don't. Yes.
So what data does that say you look? Because, because in their rebate programs, that it's already, it's already there. So and then this data is readily available.
And some customers that get the rebate do never apply for it. So that's why I said the only, the ones we get, I know a lot of, we have a lot more people that have applied for that.
To get the data, all you gotta do is just Google, Google look up, okay? You can find, you know, where, where they carry it.
Here's, I'm not sharing this for the folks online. This is just the UG's tax rebates program and here are the requirements they say.
Which we've adopted for our utility rebate program, right? And we adopted that same methodology. We're accepting it as a pass through essentially, right? In year one. Why wouldn't we, at, at a minimum, why wouldn't we afford those same customers? Without having to submit a separate application to waive their late fees?
So the, one of the differences, we're saying sixty two, this is sixty five.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any problem raising this one here in ten dot zero five to sixty five.
Yeah.
Mom okay with.
Creeping up to sixty two, so.
So how many who are sixty two to sixty five that I guess you would just leave on grandfather?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take it away from them.
I do think it's burdensome to make this an annual, you know, submission. An annual application. I think that's.
It's not an annual.
No, 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 no. Once it's approved, it's approved.
Oh, that's great. I misunderstood then.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. No, once it's approved, it's.
Well, I will tell you, I believe what Bob said because I believed that over sixty five is what I thought in my head. Is that we didn't apply late fees and didn't have a, an income requirement. So.
That's what Bob wanted. Rose, it wasn't. That's not what the policy said.
I, I guess, you know, to Brett's point, I'd like to see the data of our customers who. Take advantage, you know, what's the number of customers we have that take advantage of this? I'm sure we're finding, we'll find it small.
Yeah. Well, what about disabled?
Right.
I see.
Under sixty two or under sixty five, if you're disabled, what do we have any? They wouldn't qualify. Is that correct?
No.
Rose, what I'm trying to figure out on data, and I don't know if this exists, so I'm not asking staff to chase down non-existent data here, but it's what age, which. Any way we can get to what is the possible consequence of changing that, right? Opening it up more. Because obviously like I'm, I'm for giving the assistance that's feasible, but I don't have a sense of. What's the liability we're creating or, you know, it doesn't seem like it would be a giant revenue loss here, but.
So, can I just say, just tying it to age and obviously this is a board decision. I just Googled on the. Americans between the age of sixty five and seventy four have the highest median net worth of all age cohorts.
Yeah.
They're making it age alone.
Not, not all.
Say the majority.
Well, to Jeanette's point too, I don't think people are gonna apply for this who don't need it. It's just a matter of how many people could benefit from it now. But the current guidelines restrict them. Yeah.
But also now that they are eligible and anyone could. Right, yeah, I would counter by saying, but the people that see, see this, that could take advantage of it, that has wealth, they know that they don't qualify, so they don't, they don't make an effort to apply.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think we know that my current account would meet the age requirement, but we also know that I make late payments and pay these late payment charges. So. I, you know, I, I mean, clearly, you know, not, not applying for it, don't, don't qualify for it, but. I don't know. I, I think this is something. You know, Tom and Brett, I think we need to think about this a little bit more globally.
Should we add a restriction in here that it is only for service at their account at their home or their residence? Because what if a person's over sixty five and owns fifty rental property on town? We waive the late fees for them because the owner's sixty five? That's a good point, Rob. I think that might be something we'd be comfortable, well, at least to speak for myself.
And how many other, how many other categories can we come up with like that too?
I would like to see the data on how many customers we have that take advantage of this, if it's possible to collect that data.
And if it's possible, how many are denied? Though I know, you know, once we get into people not doing it, that gets trickier.
On eleven, excuse me, ten dot zero six, I would strike the words, or I would ask that we strike the words or demand. I think a customer's request covers that. Anybody have any issues with that?
I think that makes total sense.
That's, I'm, I'm good with it.
You guys wanna take a five minute break or so?
Yes.
Or ten minutes, whatever you guys want.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's good.
Ten minutes?
Good with it.
And it's good.
All right, thanks.
We ready to start back up?
We muted.
I'm ready.
Well, I do.
Okay. So we're at eleven dot zero one. What we're now calling returned items. So I think encompass more than just a dishonored check, correct?
Yeah, it could be an ACH or.
My, my suggestion on this is to maybe define returned item.
Return payments or is there something else included in that?
It's an item because you can, we have more than, well, it is a payment.
That's how the bank.
About the item, actually. It's a return item.
But isn't it, well, isn't it always related to a payment?
That's what I had just said. I said it is actually related to a payment, but the, the term that the bank uses is a returned item. But it is connected to the fact that they made a pay for services. We just recently changed that. Sorry. The returned items because that's kind of how the industry. But it is a return.
Fine. I think.
Is it okay?
If we just, if we just define it in however we intend it to be defined, I mean, cause it, it could be, it could mean a lot of different things, right? I mean, I know that the current policy, you know, list, you know, insufficient funds, account closed. I'm sure there's other reasons. I mean, that, I'm not, that is just my suggestion.
The next section, would we convert anything other than a check or ACH to ACH for re-present?
The bank typically does that in some fashion. It's automatic. The old day, it used to be you had to do a process to do that or whatever, but.
Now it's.
But now they.
Automatic is.
Yeah.
So, so eleven dot zero one, eleven dot zero two. Um, so, so eleven dot zero one, eleven dot zero two. Um, if it's gonna follow the same policy as above.
I know.
Yeah.
I mean, can these, can these be combined?
This actually says twelve point zero two should be eleven.
Aren't we in eleven?
Twelve point zero one.
That's twelve point zero one.
Oh, is it a whole new thing? Maybe it's, and those two can be combined, just so. Because I, I presume that, uh, you know, that a credit or debit return payment, that's also a returned item. For example, right?
I think you might say.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. We're just double checking.
No, I was, I heard it.
Rose, I think we did the separate, uh, our line or twelve point oh one for that, because if they have a return on a credit or debit card, um, they don't get the two opportunities like they do in the check in the last paragraph for the this returned item, it says upon receipt of two. Um, they don't get that with the credit or debit card return payment.
The one-time shot.
Yes.
And that's why below it says future payments will be accepted by, so.
Well, then if, then if we're that then if we're saying we follow the procedure similar.
And I believe we, I'm gonna just say, I'm gonna take, gotta remember why we did this, because all of the other things apply above except to the point where it's the last paragraph, so prior to that, everything will follow above, except on this one, future payments will be accepted by cash, so it tries to define the difference between the two, and I think that's why we separated it out, but the other information down to that point was primarily this same.
I, I think.
But we could try to combine, we could combine.
No, no, the only thing I would do then is just in the, um, in twelve dot zero one, it, you know, go ahead and keep it there, but after.
Yep.
Somehow make it clear that it, this is after one. You know, upon receipt of one returned credit or debit card payment.
Would, would, we need to put that, like, on that second paragraph where it says future payments. And where we have up above upon receipt of two, we can put upon receipt of one returned item, future payments will be accepted, but you want it there?
There's one credit card.
One in twelve dot zero one, because you only want the one payment to apply to the credit and debit card.
So she, she was looking at the last sentence in twelve oh one.
That's right.
That bleeds onto the next page, or starts on the next page.
That's right. So just mirror the last section of eleven dot, whatever that is. But but just upon receipt of one. Um.
One credit card return as bad as two bad checks.
I picked the, I'm sorry.
One credit card return as bad as two return checks.
So normally what I've seen with return credit cards, it's fraud, like somebody else's card.
You don't wanna give them opportunity, multiple opportunities, yeah.
Like, we just had one, uh, a couple weeks ago, they use, uh, deceased person's card to pay their, so, but normally.
Yeah.
I, I can't, I can't think of many other situations. I was trying to think, but I don't think there's many other situations.
There's a lot more fraud there.
That, that's it. So I don't think it really.
What if the return payment? A, and, you know, I, I don't know how, I don't know how this actually practically plays out, but what if the return payment, the credit or debit card payment is a result of fraud of that customer's account?
Okay, right. And so we, we handle it a little, little bit differently. We waive the fees, um, we make sure that it doesn't reflect on their account that they've had a return, so the customer really, it does not reflect on their account that they did something. It just reflects, so we do have, we do remove the payment, but it doesn't reflect if they did. So that would not be applicable on the.
Decline, it's not the same as return.
No, if it declines, it declines right away.
Uh huh.
If there were a situation where there was fraud, but not them trying to use someone else's, but someone else had used their card for something, could they at some point be reinstated to paying the, uh, credit card or debit card?
Oh, so like if I use your card to pay my bill, that's not gonna affect your account, it would just affect mine's.
But, but none of the consequences there on what you do. Sorry, I, I didn't hear you quite, but. Thank you.
So the customer themselves, it's not at fault, this is not. I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to say, that it doesn't, but that is the element, yeah.
No, I was trying to do too many things at once. I was reading and listening and. Yeah, and we're only being willing to be on receipt of one returned credit or debit.
Will it be?
Future payments will only be accepted by cash money or access check or whatever.
It wouldn't be credit and debit card.
Or, sorry.
And or.
If you, I'd only say if you add only there, I'd add it up in a lot of notebooks, while it's appearing in that language. Uh, a last paragraph. KC BPU will be.
So we're talking about here, probably stated to retired on Casey.
Just put only on this.
So you want to put only.
Future payment.
Is that right?
BP will be.
Well, so we're restricting them down.
So.
Pay them.
By if we're trying to say that.
Not saying is that this current payment method will not be allowed, right?
Right.
And we're trying to say that in a nicer way, so.
And a credit card, and a credit card isn't allowed either.
Oh, you're fine.
Couldn't it say that, that future payments to KC BPU must be made by?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will be accepted just one key for some reason.
Let's say now that, yeah.
Yeah.
And then say same on. Yeah. All right. Sorry, I was, there are updated paper copies, same thing on twelve oh one.
Catching a modular sentence. We're still back in section ten.
Okay, on thirteen dot zero one. What do we intend by the use of the phrase acceptable before payment arrangement? Do we mean something that's acceptable both to BPU and to the customer, or? What do we mean by that?
I would think.
Time?
That the arrangement plus here with the account, you know, defining.
I think it's for acceptable for both, because we don't wanna just accept their terms.
But isn't it more about time?
Time.
Time.
Amount.
Amount, how, how often they wanna make a payment if it's monthly, weekly, bi-weekly?
Can we say for a mutually acceptable payment arrangement, or i- is that not? Or do we wanna add some of those things you guys were just referring, you know, based on? You know? Length of payback, whatever the parameters are that are included, you know?
Is that?
Acceptable.
Is that, all right, well, I guess, Bruce, maybe you're trying to get to highlighting those specific things so people know what it's covered by, but beginning of that sentence is KC BPU may, which I think already comes with some implication that we're not just accepting whatever a customer proposes to do.
And we, we, we're trying not to get too wordy as well. So maybe mutually agreed upon. I mean, I guess the question is, they ask for payment arrangement, and we tell them what they can do, how often do they say, I can't do that, can I do something different?
And is that the end of the conversation?
Right.
Yeah, I'm asking you that. Right, I, I, I don't know, and I think, I think to define that, when, when we say mutually agreed upon, if a person proposes something other than what our current um, process is, like if they say, well, you know, I, I need to do it um, for eight months, we, we don't offer that, and so I think when we say mutually agreed upon, we, we can agree upon something that, that we're not going to offer, so I think it has to be what is acceptable, which means I think the only difference I believe that we're saying is you can pay at least once a month, but more than once a month, if you wanna make a payment arrangement of and it can be less than six months, if you want it less than six months. But we have certain defined criteria that is not negotiable.
So is that language needed? Or do you just say they allow the customer to enter into a pay arrangement?
It's, we've changed it before.
Right, great, great, great question.
I just said, does that language, does that language need?
It used to be for only three months, and so again, we're talking.
Well, if we just stick that out, if we say KC BPU may allow a customer to enter uh, into a payment arrangement, if the customer is unable to pay, we just take all that to the discrepancy of what is acceptable.
I like that.
Go from, uh, enter into and then take that out, and go clear to payment arrangement. Into payment arrangement.
Yeah.
So change and.
Or you can just add a before.
Don't drop a two.
Enter to a payment arrangement. KC BPU, they allow a customer to enter into a payment arrangement. So all that would be fine.
And you can mutually back out.
Yeah, mutually acceptable would be fine.
Take that up.
Yep. Um. Yeah, does and cross out?
Yes.
Okay. Into a payment arrangement, if the customer is unable to pay the full amount of the utility bill that they're due. So then there's no.
A space.
There's no.
Payment.
Yeah.
There's an A, there's one after the N. She's there.
Oh, there it is. You left that one in.
Yeah.
He left.
One at the beginning?
Either one.
This one has seniority.
You know why?
I would debate that. I skipped right over, just assumed.
Is it possible? Um to, to, and I don't know, but if if we took out after payment arrangement, everything up until in accordance with this section. Customer may allow, uh, K- KC BPU may allow a customer to enter into a payment arrangement in accordance with this section.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean. So a lot of words I just took out.
We don't, we don't object to why, what their justification is for needing an EDP, right? Like, I might be able to pay my current bill, but I can still sign up.
For an arrangement, yeah.
Um, sorry, payment arrange.
But.
Thank you.
Seniority.
I like that, too.
I mean, we were.
That's really nice.
I mean, can we, can we live with that, or?
We allow them to.
I'm going to. I like this.
I mean, it's only because they can't pay their bill, yeah, they've even done it before, like say, um, they had a water leak. Seven hundred bill was inside, and they.
We usually reach out.
Well. Is there any other scenario under which a payment arrangement is not available?
Diverge.
Criteria, or you have diversion if they've already got three.
Okay, three terminated, it's already, oh, they're on there, yeah, so.
Right. And then, yeah.
Arrangements on final accounts.
Rob?
Diversion is, uh, any effort to steal power without.
Right, 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 right.
I thought you were gonna draw like you did last time. That's why.
It's, you can see.
And you don't wanna be.
Yeah, diversion, they have to pay everything at one time, or that, one time, but before they can.
They're paid zero.
They can't.
And we don't set a range, it's on final accounts.
I mean, they can do their own arrangement.
You can take fraud, right, you don't allow them to. Eligibility for programs to make that easy, they just have to pay their.
Final accounts.
Final two, okay, so fraud, diversion, final. We need that.
Well, we took a lot of words out, and a lot of words in. No, man. I mean, do we wanna spell those out?
Leave a bunch of words in and then add a bunch of words.
Yeah.
I'm not trading words here now.
You want us to spell those out, I guess? Diversion and fraud or anything like something like that, do we wanna?
He said we're going to first. Where it says.
I mean, we're spelling everything else out as to why, what it's not available for. Shouldn't we be clear, is it not available for?
Yeah.
Not available for non-residential customers, customers. I don't know. Well, because if we don't think of something, now it's defined in that.
If they're, aren't you putting after, it says it's not available for non-residential customers, something we. Version, that's when after that.
That's what we're saying, like. I think he has, this is what I said, right, I said, why don't we do a read?
You know what, time, time, final accounts, and then there's.
It's not, yeah, it's just has six months, it has its criteria.
And that's, we can.
And we don't see.
This one should really be final accounts comma if service is.
I think.
They got our customer.
Except during COVID.
Right.
Final accounts.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just say, yes, service?
No.
That it's. We'll schedule for this. That day.
Or return payment, you wanna take your terms payment amount off?
Uh, I don't think so.
Very polite.
Return.
I do, so we actually.
I don't know if you need an outfit, or.
Yeah, take.
She's like that, so.
Cause we just mentioned it was item, not.
Turned item.
It was return. What do we call it?
Item.
Item, yeah. So then. So it's not what it's like.
Well, for non-residential customers, diversion, fraud, final accounts. Big service.
And that's called, and she was like, sounds like me. Is that accurate?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, you're good, I just actually added available for non-residential customers, diversion, frauds, final accounts. And services. And if we're disconnected that day, or a return item, so that way it matches the items, but.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, but you can't set the right John.
A returned item doesn't, doesn't encompass a, a returned credit or debit card payment, right?
That's what we say. Item slash payment. Oh. It's, isn't it?
Or return payment.
You say, oh, payment.
Yeah.
Well, we live.
I should put item on that, too. I changed that from payment to item, Rose. We'd be consistent. Yes. Credit and debit card returned item.
So Rob's going to be. Rather than adding more payment there. We'll go back up to the credit card section.
Sorry, and change that to item.
Change the heading of the subsection of.
Okay, item.
We get them on.
And on the actual heading as well. The item is returned. Ralph, start from the last.
Yeah, over there. Yeah, over there. Hey, it's our script, not today, but tomorrow.
It can set anything, I don't, this can't be the same day.
Okay.
Again, at this last line, we say acceptable payment arrangements will be determined at the time. Problem with that, but worried about. Chicken noodle.
It's the payment arrangement. I didn't strike it.
Yeah.
Those customers who have been issued a corrected bill may be offered a payment arrangement.
I think we succeeded in making that section.
That's on the class.
No. They got on the clean version levels.
We need to bring.
I think that.
We can probably take agreement out at the end. Even shorter. Like ten minutes.
So you want to roll to that, hit your babies this one?
Yeah, in the paragraph above that one. To initiate a payment arrangement. The second sentence. If a payment arrangement is broke, a.
After if.
Oh, it's a payment.
A.
We want to put one hand in series.
We define what.
Five hundred and eighty in here as well, Rose, customer should have been issued a corrected bill, maybe offered a payment arrangement.
Oh, it's plural though.
Thank you.
Hey, Rob?
Yes, sir.
Can you add that we probably need to define what terminated arrangement is? Third paragraph.
It's like broken right before that, is that the same thing?
Yeah.
We just. Well, I guess is word broken, perfect.
I I mean, wouldn't that be a default of a payment arrangement?
Yeah.
You're just not concerned uh in replacing terminated or in replacing broken.
Uh, broken was what I was referring to, but wha- what it, can you guys define what a terminated arrangement is?
I liked how she said more default. Said she liked to how you said default, if the, if the arrangement is not paid on time, if the bill is not paid on the due date.
If they get an NSF.
If they get an NSF, serious term, any type of return. And so returns, if if it's not uh paid, the arrangement's paid on the day and or the bill is paid on the due day. Now, yes. Because if they, if they pay the bill and not the arrangement, or the arrangement, not the bill, it's still going to default. We do say default, I think, I think we do use the word default actually. Terminated or default, and when they get something, they'll say a payment arrangement, if they get a text message, it'll say the payment arrangement has terminated. We do send those messages down.
If the payment arrangement is not made on the due date or is returned by the bank, the payment arrangement is in default.
Or that one?
He's suspended.
Oh, I added it as a note, the person has to go back and get a definition as the study.
And then how does it work with the next, if a payment arrangement is default, utility service, okay? But so.
I I I think what you're gonna probably want to do there is integrate the definition of a terminated arrangement. Um, maybe into that sentence before. So I I think we need to clean up probably those, those couple of sentences there, based on that definition.
The case of a terminated arrangement, payment arrangement. Defined as.
Yeah, ju- just put a note there, Rob, that we need to clean those two sentences up, please. Or that section, that paragraph.
So, an an idea that we had that may help with this, instead of saying a terminated arrangement, if we're going to put default, there is maybe that we use that as well down uh for the last, and the customer's up to three defaulted arrangements per calendar year. That way we stay with the same wording. Unless you define.
I mean, either way, it's gonna have to be defined, I'm, I'm fine if you want to use that instead of terminated, I mean, it's.
But we, if we're gonna define it, we might, probably we'll just leave it in there then.
Might be within there, sorry.
Said if we're, if we're going to.
And if this does become a defined term, you'd be.
Into in default.
There is a default.
In default. In default, yeah.
I think we could say a customer is allowed up to three defaults per calendar year. Because we're already talking about payment arrangements. Customers allowed up to three defaults per calendar year.
I I think you're gonna have to integrate that into. It depends on how we define some of this stuff, w- we can define default, we can define, you know, I mean, I I think we need to think about that more globally. If if, I don't even know if we use defaults anywhere else, I don't know that we don't, but.
Use term.
If we're talking really about just, you know, a payment arrangement, let's make it specific to payment arrangements, right?
And I think there maybe a need to clarify that the, just for loud, three terminated arrangements, but that doesn't mean that you won't be disconnected.
Right, and that's why I think those two sentences need to be cleaned up and combined in a way. Because that's what we're really talking about, we're talking about i- if, you know, if you have a terminated arrangement, as it's been described here, you are eligible for disconnection, right?
Right.
Right, without.
And and so, and then you're allowed up to three of those in in a calendar year.
We've already got this line here, utility services are eligible for disconnection without a prior notification in the case of default.
But isn't a defaulted payment arrangement, isn't that a terminated arrangement?
Yes.
Unless I misunderstood.
No, you're correct.
And after three defaulted uh arrangements, then you're not eligible for
till the following year.
For a year to get back on or for.
It starts over in January. It starts over in January, Tom, so it's not a rolling calendar.
So if you've had three defaulted payment arrangements, then you need to go on a cash base, on a cash basis bit or whatever.
No.
No.
Pay your bill, pay your bill in full every month for the rest of the year before you can then get on a payment arrangement again.
No, there's no requirement.
Wouldn't be a cash basis.
Wouldn't be a cash.
But you would not be eligible for an arrangement, so yes, if you don't pay your bill in full, then um you could be eligible for disconnection, but you don't have to pay cash.
Right.
Right.
You'd have to pay your bill, you'd have to pay your bill in full every month.
Yes, you wouldn't be able to set up an arrangement, you'd have to pay it in full.
Plus, whatever was ba- whatever was owed back on whatever you were on the arrangement for.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
May, may I ask a question here? Um, and Abby, this question is to you. Is, is this scenario here, you know, up to three, in this case, terminated payment arrangements, you know, allowed on any calendar year? It it, does this seem uh more forgiving than the utility you came from?
Yeah, so this is more forgiving than the KCC, really terms and conditions, theirs is two.
Right.
And theirs is a rolling twelve months, not a calendar twelve months.
Right. And and I, I ask all that um to in this meeting is being recorded again, Bill, you have long maintained that BPU offers more forgiving payment arrangement and options to its customer base. And I think that this very policy is um, you know, evidence of that, so.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for, you know, continuing to, to remind certainly the board members and the public that that, you know, we are trying to work with our customer base.
Thank you for reminding us of that today too, Rose, because uh I don't know that you know, the public fully understands that, so that's on us, uh, I mean, not to, not to brag about what we do, but also understand that uh, that we do help people in our community far greater than and uh many, many of our other neighbor utilities.
I, I think, you know, once we have gotten this policy fully revised and, you know, approved by the full board, um, I I think that we should make an effort to highlight some of these things um in in every way that we can um back to the, to the greater community, and we can talk about that, you know, at that time, but but uh I think that it's important because, well, we know why it's important, so.
I I agree, I agree, but I would like to invite the board into that conversation, you know, because you guys have certain sensitivities that that we may have or may not have, so the more that all of us think about how that communication needs to roll out, the better.
No, I agree, and and I'm thinking even in terms of, you know, potentially using our community engagement committee as a conduit back into the community uh into some of the events that, you know, we're hopeful that are, we're gonna start integrating into, so it's not just, you know, David or Nick or you know, Patrice or staff or somebody who has to go out to the community that, you know, the board you know, accompanies the the staff in sort of sending these messages out, I I think that's important. So, anyway, that's TBD for future dates, but I I just think it's important to highlight that because this, this is a very, very good example. Um, and Abby, of course, you know, confirmed it, Ed, just literally coming from um, you know, one of our neighboring utilities into BPU um, and and seeing it play out in real time. Uh, the next paragraph, customers who have issued a corrected bill may be offered payment arrangements. I I think I would just say maybe offered a payment arrangement. Um, but also, under what circumstances wouldn't a corrected bill be offered a payment arrangement? If the corrected bill is just like a negligible amount? I mean, I know we've seen a lot here recently where we've had, you know, back billings, you know, to the tune of the thousands and things like that, I understand that. Um, and I think we covered that sort of elsewhere in the document, but I just, I'm curious as to where we wouldn't offer a payment arrangement for a corrected bill.
She say wouldn't person?
We just put Bs on there.
Just because it says may be offered, I'm just curious.
Fraud, I, fraud, you see.
We should.
So a corrected bill that was based upon fraud perpetrated by a customer, is that what you're thinking, Tom?
What? Yeah. You said what would, what might not qualify.
Them's put in there for back billing only.
So customers who have been issued a corrected bill due to an error of abuse time will be, but if it's an error on their side, it will be.
If they're, if they're just given a corrected bill, I don't think that corrected bill we offer a payment arrangement. I think that was specifically put in there for back billing. Those are, right, those those have been corrected, and so it's a back bill, so it's a corrected bill, so it's specifically for.
Because they may have multiple months for services to offer.
Yes, so if it's a back bill over a certain amount of time, whatever the amount of time was that it was back billed for, we would offer that same amount of months for a payment arrangement, that's what we give them, so if it was six months, if it was twelve months, eighteen, whatever, if it was three months, it'd be three.
No, I'd say if it's three, we still do the six.
Right.
So I'd say instead of being billing just to remain consistent, however amount of time the back, or however long the back bill is, they always send the same letter, so they all have the opportunity to set up a payment arrangement. It's a work system.
And didn't we cover that in the last session, didn't we address that? And I think we put language, or we're gonna put language into that effect above. So do we even need that paragraph? And maybe, Rob, just put a note to check that against the back billing provision. And I don't know what the, the section number is, but.
Section ten, I think, send out one, last paragraph, maybe. That's talking about back bill.
But I guess if we talk about.
Even if we don't, I definitely think we could take out everything after KC BPU in the last sentence, right? We already said payment arrangements will be determined by the time the customer contacts KC BPU. Make the payment arrangements, we start and finish.
Yeah.
Well, shouldn't that be, shouldn't that just be moved, that concept be moved to the first paragraph then?
Yeah, I think so. Although the first paragraph lists out all the things that would fool them from getting it, and this is something that would make them hella. We just need to know this.
I'm actually good with taking that out. We addressed it in the back billing section.
Could we go ahead and flag it for deletion then?
Yes, I I can say since we have already addressed that previously, we just want to go back to this time here. I'm good with just taking that.
I'll still leave a note to check back billings. Actually, no, I can, yeah, it's three, top me last one. Assuming a third, a week. Jump to the next section here, Rose, are we ready? Assuming, uh, uh, we jumped to the next section here, Rose. Are we ready for our next section?
Y- yeah.
Okay, so just confirming, so the new one here. The striking notes of fourth and fifth bullet points are just because we didn't add that more simply in the final bit there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's not standard for us to do this. That's, thanks Rob, I think that was certification.
Under the, the fee section, what's a penalty? Understand past charges. I'd like to know what fees are other than the disconnect fee, potentially a reconnect fee?
So let's say a customer has been disconnected, and we tried doing to reconnect, and we're not able to reconnect, and we roll a truck out there, and they've diverted services in order to have service, why we, why they were disconnected. So those kind of uh, fees and stuff would be, or penalties would be up.
What, what, what penalty? What, what's the penalty for that?
With the diversion.
Yeah, I don't know what. I don't know what those diversion charges are. That's defined by the light meter.
Is there a penalty that wouldn't also fall under? Is it redundant to say fees? I think fees are automatically applied by the system, and penalties are calculated by the staff to try to make up cost revenue. Um, I think that's why they're split up.
That's where we got the problem, right? That, that right there is where we have the problem. I don't know as a customer, I understand this is for a very specific situation. Unless you can tell me another situation other than diversion. Are we charging a, a, a truck roll fee? Are we charging, what are we doing?
If, if they're disconnected, there is a disconnect fee for water and electric, both which are different. But that's not penalties. The penalties, I believe, that are talked about here are the ones for diversion and things, because we don't charge penalties for that. We charge fees.
So there may be equipment damage out there too, that you, you may be responsible for when people do try to divert or steal power or water. And if we have to go out and replace that, then who's ultimately responsible?
Are the diversion identified in the electric and water?
Right.
Policies?
I think it was.
I think it was.
I don't think they had the amounts.
Maybe we referenced that.
Yeah, I, I think if, if I, I think we, we have to look at cross reference. I mean, I know we talked about this last time, but we've gotta, we've gotta look at cross referencing that here. Because we can't just generically say, oh, we're gonna charge undefined penalties for a thing, right? Even if there's a methodology, I mean, I understand you guys are, everything you're saying makes perfect sense.
Let us look at the electric and water service policies and see what we can cross reference there.
Penalties or diversion fees or diversion something? I don't know if we might use these. See how they classify it.
And then the may in that, in that bullet point. I, we're, uh, past due charges, fees, penalties, once we define all that, or do whatever we're gonna do. May have to be paid in order, or will have to be paid in order to establish service, reestablish services.
I say they've been cut the ball on this diversion, I'll say, but if they've been cut no payment, haven't paid anything.
We need to collect the amount due, and if we fit in, should we say the asked through amount? Wouldn't we use means lawsuits to collect a current due amount?
Yeah, I mean, you, to use all legal collection methods, I think, I don't think we need it.
Do you wanna stop after methods?
I think, I'm fine stopping after methods, but I think that someone else wanted the liens and lawsuits included. I can't remember. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna take that out if someone else wanted that in, but I'm fine stopping with use all legal collection methods.
Put your group to put it in.
Right, uh, the liens and, liens and lawsuits.
I think they were in there because of the two bullets, move the two bullets, they just put them in that line is what we think we did.
I think there's some value in letting people know what those things might be, but I at least agree that to collect the amount due is probably unnecessary, since we're already describing those as collecting services.
So, Tom, to your point earlier, that may or will, were you talking about under fees or? Under fees, right.
Yes, I think that's. They don't have to be paid prior to the establishing service.
So may is appropriate?
You're talking about second may? One in the second.
Yes.
Or the first one?
Yeah, the second.
Second one.
Uh, can you expand on that a little bit? So it's not, they don't necessarily have to have that.
To reestablish.
Sometimes they may have to.
I don't think we ever, I don't, I do not think we have ever um, enforced that.
It was a prior assessed fee that was already.
Like the.
If it was a priorly assessed fee prior to the disconnect, that, and it was already included as an amount, then that would have to be cured. But if the penalty fee was done because of this disconnect, then they wouldn't necessarily have to cure that, correct?
Because.
Some fees may be included in something else.
Because when, when we put the, yeah, on there for the disconnection, it's not actually a, a delinquent amount is put on there, but it still needs to be paid. Like, it's the same thing with the NSF. It may not have been billed with the last bill, but it's included in what you have to pay if your service is disconnected for an NSF.
Right.
But not the reconnect, not the disconnect fee when they're cut off. They'll just have to pay the amount that they were disconnected for without it being included. That makes sense.
So you said, uh, uh, genetic here.
I'm sorry.
You said under past due charges fee penalty, you said we didn't collect on that, or?
The penalties that we're really talking about are diversion. If we, if we connect that back to diversion, then yes, diversion fees have to be paid.
Okay, okay.
Um, when we're talking about for a, a past due amount of charges, if someone's service is disconnected, they don't have to pay the fee at that time. It's associated, it will come out on their next bill. If it's an NSF, then they do have to pay.
So does it make sense to totally separate this from diversion, since we have a diversion section?
We can't just.
I think we, we need to see what, what information's in those electric and water policies.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, we're talking about diversion sometimes or not, and we're talking about collecting fees or not. So does it make sense to totally separate it?
So, yeah, we can take it out.
And just handle all that on some diversion section.
And then, yeah, we can leave it in there and their.
This would be, this would be, with the exception of the version, which was mentioned earlier, all of this applies to everything else. Does that make sense, or?
It doesn't have to be paid in order to reestablish service, the, when they're disconnected. Just what they were, the, the delinquent amount they were disconnected for without the fee, because that fee has not become delinquent. But in terms of NSF and the NSF fee is that it, it does have, it does have to be paid.
Yeah. I generally like to spell it out if we can, but sometimes spelling it out in that much detail makes it more confusing. In this case, I think just leaving the may. Simple swash.
If, if there, if there are times when it doesn't need to be paid, may is fine.
Twenty-two minutes left, we wanna dig into section sixteen, fifteen.
So, hey, hang on for a second. I mean, where's the version of the guy?
I, I don't find diversion in the document. I find that we, I know that we talked about it last session.
I saw it earlier.
I know again.
Payment arrangements, that's when we said we wouldn't do payment arrangements, diversion or fraud.
That's under payment arrangements.
Okay.
These four are all common. There's not a section in this policy. I think it's spelled out in the electric.
So we can reference electric and water here, and then if we're not.
You, you made the note to see what electric and water.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Then we can figure out what section it is.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And, I'm just going back to the earlier, and uh, if this is diversion and everything else, just making sure that we separate those charges and everything, other diversion policies, whether it's a, if it's an electric and water, okay. But, you know, customers see things, and then they say that, see this, and they come to the board meeting and complain about different things, because there's no reason to them. And the, the board members that are not here don't know what to make of, of the policies. Now, they will later when we present this to them, but, you know, just to make this as clear as possible.
So it's in section four dot eleven in the electric policy.
Okay.
It's not called out in a section, it's just called out in the, in the body of the.
Right, okay. And then I guess, Rob, when we get to there later, let's make sure that collecting fees, uh, penalties and everything else is identified in the next section. There will be some reference here back to, to those policies. Customers, if they're not constructing, adding servers, building infrastructure, doing the wiring, it wouldn't necessarily hold the doors for too many other reasons. It's all billing, they're gonna come here. If there's no reference, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't know that.
Something like, uh, the diversion fees as defined.
Right.
Are we moving on?
Yeah. Isn't a late payment charge just what it is? I mean, do we have to have the phrase as determined by KC BPU?
At the definition, are we defining that late payment term?
Is late payment charge defined in the definition section, Rose? I don't know that it is.
I don't think it is yet, but it, we probably, I, is it, but it, is it on, it's on the, the fee schedule, right?
And should it be fee or charge?
It is a.
What do we call, we call it a late payment charge, correct?
Charge.
I mean, I don't care what we call it, just keep it consistent.
So I got a note to add it to the definition section. What was the other half of your change, Ms. Rose?
I think you, you marked it out.
Yep.
Yeah, and in the last sentence there, um, non-payment of a bill on or before the due date? A- and I don't know, I'm, I'm, are there other instances of disconnection that's not related to a due date of some kind?
Or diversion, disconnect immediately to those, darling.
Return item.
Return item.
We just say non-payment.
Yeah, it's a payment, but it would return, so it's not really a non-payment.
I, I think it's not a payment to BPU.
To Abby's point, I think, go ahead, Abby.
Well, you had mentioned it first, do we just take it out and say non-payment can result with disconnection of service?
I think that's better.
Well, I heard you mention it at one point, so I was talking to you.
I don't have a problem with that. I feel, well, sorry, go ahead, Rose.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Brett.
Maybe this is being too simplistic, but I feel like non-payment of the bill implies by the due date.
I, I think the only thing I would add is non-payment of the bill in accordance with this policy, whatever we're calling this, customer service policy, which I think I did shorten that in a definition, Rob, so.
That might encompass the returned item piece to the step.
That encompasses everything in here, or it should, right? Yeah, I think it's customer service policy.
That's what I said, non-payment, so they're gonna take that bill, yeah.
Do you want me to spell out in accordance with?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had no idea what that was. I thought it was spa at first.
So it's gonna be non-payment of the bill? Or just non-payment?
Non-payment in accordance with, that's right.
And additional fees, right? Disconnection is the only penalty. So do we need to spell that out to be able to do?
Hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second. Non-payment in accordance with this customer service policy. Not plural. This is one policy.
We already covered the fees in the previous section now.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think it's okay to just speak to disconnection in this.
Okay, cause this is an additional, that makes sense.
I think the only correction or edit that I had in that next paragraph is at the very last line. Uh, in, I think I would make disconnect into disconnection.
To avoid disconnection and take out B?
No, 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 the very last line, any previous unpaid amount is eligible for disconnection at any time. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it reads better.
This, I'll speak short again, this, disconnection.
I'm with me.
Yes.
Yep.
We reference it as cut off. Can we reference it as cutoff date or a disconnection date? We call it cutoff date.
So the system, like, I can't remember what the bill says, in the system, it'll say cutoff. I can't remember what the bill reads.
I was just wondering if the.
And the morning came back, yeah.
And at any time, we, we put that in there specifically because we didn't want to.
No, she didn't want to. No, no, she, she just changed disconnection.
Oh, okay, I thought we placed it in.
She no longer hammering these out on Electrolux, but she really go through and remove the devil's face.
No. No.
Agreed.
No.
It's the board's policy, Angie, sorry.
No, I can't, I can't agree to that.
Angie, I'm older than you are. Come on, I've, I've joined the new wave. All the kids are doing it.
I know, I, I can't agree with it.
Sorry, I muted myself. I said, we'll play rock, paper, scissors for that one.
And I'm not giving up the Oxford comma either. Yeah. I'm like, I can tell, cause I'm like, that's.
Next time you're here, Rose, I'll teach you lizard, paper, spot, three, four, five, paper, silk.
It was weird.
It was so weird.
Now it's weird doing two.
Okey-dokey.
Five beats lizard, lizard.
So are we on restoration?
Dot oh two?
Yeah, I think I have the same question about penalties and it sounds to me like it's the same discussion we probably just had.
Yeah.
So.
We need a similar note.
Restoration of service versus.
Oh, that.
As to fees, penalties.
Uh, so I'm just gonna add a note to change this in accordance with the changes made for section fourteen point zero.
Yeah.
Well, it's fourteen zero and also on size fourteen oh one, but yeah. Since there's only one section in it. How do we have that last line somewhere there, the very last one?
But please.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah.
About twenty-four hours.
For any question.
For any questions.
Please contact us.
Why do I have that in?
For any questions regarding the twenty-four hour service restoration time? Is that what we're saying?
No idea.
Exactly. For any questions about the state that we've had happening here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I, I think that this line was added back when this paragraph was full.
Yeah.
Um, and so there was a question about, uh, if it's normally restored within two hours, why do I need to allow twelve times that factor to, before I reach out? Uh, but since we've already edited it to just be down to please allow twenty-four hours for restoration.
I'd say strike it.
Yeah.
Strike this section.
The sentence.
Not, it is a sentence, sorry, thank you.
So does the confirmation line, does it no longer exist?
No, it still does, Rose.
Then why do we take that line out?
I think we, well, I don't, I mean, we could add, call the confirmation line. Uh, I just, if we ever change the phone number. Um, but I don't know why we took that out. I think just because of, uh, well, you know what, we didn't have text messaging when this was available.
Well, I think we also, we want to get the system to do.
They do the automatic.
Automatically where if they pay enough, the system creates the order and submits it all within hopefully like five or 10 minutes versus having, and call back in and spend more time trying to get.
The reason why we had that in there was because if a person does pay the amount that their bill has already come out, which is made, the previous amount is not eligible, this is the long one. It's, it's delinquent now.
But it's not.
But it's not collectible because it's not eligible collections because we haven't gotten to that twenty days. Well, the system now is looking for the delinquent amount. So it adds what they were disconnected for and that delinquent amount together, and it's waiting for that payment to be made. That's why we even came up with the confirmation line. Once we can get, but we have had all of these discussions that if we can get the system to look at what it's disconnected for and not what it's delinquent, the count is delinquent for, then it will, then it will know the right amount to turn it, turn it back on automatically, which is what we need.
I think they just put that in last Friday.
Have this for.
Was that part of it, just the delinquent or?
I just think they put it back in too.
Did he jump out the look? Cause I thought he just did it backwards what it was.
Yes, I thought so too.
He had TMI therapist.
He did, but it was just that it was, I don't know.
And then, and then did they just have that also, like, if they pay at the kiosk, they would call with the confirmation?
Yes, they do call the confirmation line. And it's out there.
Yeah, I say, cause those don't, uh.
We don't have real time.
We don't have real time.
Yeah.
For those things that are not real time yet, yet.
Yes. Our next meeting is next week.
Okay. So after all of that, I'm still unclear as to whether or not five seven three ninety-one ninety-one can be used to confirm whether or not the service has been restored.
So it's not used to confirm if it's been restored. That's where the customer, like, uh, Lori was just saying, if they paid at a kiosk, we're not real time on those payments. So if the customer calls the number and lets us know they paid, we'll look at the payment and restore the service.
As well as, as well as a night drop. If a customer comes up and drops it in the night drop until we go out within an hour and take it out, then we don't have any, um, record of the payment yet, but they will go out during the day and pick those up, but it allows the person to call in. But I think we I think we were trying to take that specific number out of there and automate most of this.
So it's some changes on that. Yet, at the final version of this, that we're ready, this is for a vote, is a word for, and in this one, I don't know how quickly those changes are coming, but if that's something that is up and running before we finalize this, then that's gonna have an influence on it. Any changes? Makes sense. So I'm inclined, if they're, if those timelines are gonna match up, okay, to come back to this before we finalize.
Yeah.
That works for Rose and Tom.
Sure.
No, it does.
I saw it change twice. Or change it and then change the pads. Didn't you call that line the?
Confirmation line.
What you suggest.
So if we'd wanna add the confirmation line back in, but not the specific number, should we specify the phone number someplace else?
It'll.
I'm sorry, say that again, Rob.
You guys said you wanted, Rose wants to discuss adding the confirmation line back in, and I, I pulled that out in the comment, but you specifically didn't wanna add the, the phone number itself in case it changes. But how will the customer go to look up confirmation?
I think it's on the website.
On the website?
I'll double check that. I know it's on the website.
Right.
I do know it's posted by our kiosk, though the other kiosk, it may not be, but it's posted by our kiosk, but here, here shortly, hopefully we'll have the kiosk. Real time, we won't have to, it's like, still.
Somewhere between a payment.
That's from making a payment.
Whether it's real time or not, say all of it's real time.
They make a payment real time, we get it.
System still has to process service order to go in, service. If we're having, uh, system issues, that that order is not processed. What if we're, what if we're having infrastructure problems out in the field to where that didn't process quickly? And the customers are getting impatient because normally it takes only this amount of time, but they've been off for three or four hours and they, and they still haven't received service. What do we do with that?
We allow twenty-four hours?
We allow twenty-four.
So please allow up to twenty-four hours for services.
Yes. Because if we're having system issues or having issues out in the field, we need that.
Yeah, we don't wanna roll trucks yet.
Just, just raising an issue with customers that's gonna come up. Okay, so if we're, if we're good, we just say up to twenty-four hours, okay, but these are things that will come up.
But this section only deals with disconnection or non-payment. It doesn't deal with, I'll call it a force majeure issue, but it doesn't deal with the network issue.
But if they're trying to, if they, if they got disconnected for non-payment and they try to pay and that payment don't get, I mean, the, the service don't just get, get reconnected for several hours. And they're.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting to put, I understand why we wanna take the sentence with the two hours out. I get it. The two sentences with that. I understand that completely. But, I, I mean, if there's a mechanism where a customer, other than, I mean, and I suppose, well, I don't know, if you're home, you know if the power's on, right?
Let me, let me drill it out a little bit deeper, Rose. So I'm, I'm just mainly focused on the number. So here's something that didn't happen for several hours and there's nothing, well, it's on the website of pay, but here's where somewhere customers can call to say, hey, I made these payments. Here we are three or four hours later and I still don't have service. And if it's spelled out on the website, okay.
The confirmation line is an automated line. They're not going to get an answer at that time anyway. They would need to call ninety-one ninety for that information. And even if they, yeah, the confirmation line is, they're just giving us their receipt numbers. And, yeah, they just leave a receipt number so we can look at it. But if we're having issues out in the field and things, the confirmation line wouldn't.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I was gonna say. That's just to confirm that you made the payment. So, be realistic.
I'm, I'm good.
But I think in any instance when, when it, they haven't been turned back on, we always ask them to call ninety-one ninety. Not the ninety-one ninety, no.
Well, I could go in a different direction, but probably not this, this already publicized. I'll ask you all for, I'm trying to. And it's something we already covered, so break back in jail.
We have two sections.
Say, okay, we can have that talk. You wanna go to the next two sections? Is that what you were saying?
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody stay.
Rose, you wanna finish or you wanna keep going? You wanna finish, you wanna stop, you wanna keep going?
I mean, I wanna finish because we're so close, but I, if we can do it in a half an hour, I'm still good, but if we can't, then I'm home.
So, so the next, uh, the next section that we pointed out was hot and cold, or.
Cold and hot.
The paragraphs go hot and then cold.
We need to actually.
We need, ask that.
So do you wanna revisit cold and hot weather rules again?
I, I think I would defer to Brett and to Tom on that. Um, I don't know, I, Tom, I know that we've had, um, a lot of, uh, discussion about this and, you know, we, we've been afforded the opportunity to see what data looks like around this and everything else. I don't know that Brett has, so.
We need to add summer months to the definition section.
Yeah.
When you guys did the presentation.
At what, I'm sorry.
Summer months.
We can briefly talk to Brett. So, other than the hot weather rule, uh, we've gone back and moved this closer to the KCC rule. And, uh, instead of, uh, forecasted, so the KCC says if it's forecasted it to be low freezing at any point, then we don't disconnect. And, uh, and that's kinda what we moved to, right, Janetta?
Yes, and if I, if I'm not mistaken, Kansas is thirty-five, and I don't think we adopted that. We went down to thirty-two, so we gave even a literate.
Missouri, Missouri's thirty-two, so we're, we're looking at both policies.
So I think we adapted the thirty-two.
Um, but for your cold weather policy, specifically state the term of the year, but for the summer, why don't we just say summer months? So we should get those two in line. Yeah.
Yeah. I agree on that.
It's anything outside of November first.
Below, then that blacks out that entire period.
Right.
If it was also forecasted to go above, then that gave us an opportunity to connect when it reached above thirty-five degrees for that day. Uh, now, which is, we're looking at the low.
We would not cut today.
Yeah.
Cause tonight's low is twenty.
Okay.
And how recently was that updated?
That's pretty.
Two years.
We've updated this two, two or three times in the last.
But in the last year, it was recent, it was two years.
Yes, three times, seven days.
A lot of, a lot of other times we did this.
There are silent occasions.
I guess, Rose and Tom, I'm, I'm happy to defer to you all on this. I don't feel like I've got enough to have a strong opinion about needing a change versus keeping it the same.
Yeah.
One, one big, big difference is, uh, and Abby helped me, I may get this part wrong. So if, if you're a West Star or a regulated utility, you have to make a payment arrangements prior to the end of cold weather protection, right?
Uh, you can make it during the cold weather.
Okay, but you, but you have to make the payment arrangements, right? And if you don't, then you're not subject to it.
Cold weather.
Cold weather, right.
You can still be disconnected.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk about making the arrangement. You can make it outside of that cold weather policy, right? It has to be made between November, right?
To make a payment arrangement?
To.
Or whether not. Avoid disconnection for the cold west house.
So you can yes, yes, that is correct. But if somebody is disconnected, so if they are disconnected prior to November first, they can call after November first and make a cold weather payment.
But it requires a payment, uh, arrangement.
Yeah.
We do not require that, is what I'm saying.
So, you know, here's the second part of it. So I don't believe every G or anybody else are offering payment arrangements throughout the year like we are.
Yes, they will offer it in the summertime as well.
Summertime, but either summer or winter, but not throughout the year.
Well, summer is anytime, not during the cold weather world. So they will offer it anytime. Yes, but they only do two, not three. We offer additional, one additional one than they do.
Hmm, yeah. Huh, how many months?
But they, the hot piece of that, it's a business practice, not a KCC requirement, so that is not defined for them on disconnection during the summer.
Again, it mirrors as closely what the KCC rule, which is, as you told me, can.
Yeah.
Rose and Tom, are you guys okay with this as it's currently written? Are there changes you'd like to see?
We've beaten this thing.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good. As long as we use common sense, people use common sense.
Is that the definition?
Yeah.
At least that one's been a normal winter, so I'm not sure what a normal winter is. We said after the end of, of this period, we come back and reflect on the revenue we unpack.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Yeah, this is.
Right.
It's typical. There were still quite a few days we didn't cut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we ready for flex pay then?
Yep.
My, my biggest issue with the flex pay section is that, um, we refer to the service, the separate service agreement that's applicable to this. Is, is that something that's available online?
That agreement is not. That agreement is not online, but it is read. To the customer when they're agreeing to it, and we send it to, we send it to them as well at that time.
We email, if we have an email address on file or mail, if we do not.
But I thi- I think if a customer is trying to determine whether or not they're gonna take advantage of flex pay. And I understand the customers that. Generally take advantage of flex pay. Um, our customers that. You know, are. Um. In distress with their bill. But if there's other options, and and I know that we've made some push to direct customers to flex pay and all that stuff. I think it's. It's just transparent to have something called quote service agreement. Out there available to a customer in advance.
Difficult to have it online.
And we have the documentation, it's a matter of I T putting it, putting it out there. So that. That'd be, uh, if it's on B P U, that'd be David thing. It's on B P U dot com, that'd be a David.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna make a note too. I think it's a reason why we never.
I, you know, we have a section out there for it that describes quite a bit about it, I just don't think. It it was pretty lengthy and we've been trying to shorten it as we've been going through, so.
Maybe also documentally?
I mean, it's it's one page now.
Agreement between B P U, i- is it an agreement with B P U and the customer, or is it an agreement with a third party?
B P U and the customer.
Well.
It basically just kinda tells them that uh. I like, kinda like. Basically, like, if they get below zero, they're gonna get a penny disconnect notice and they could be disconnected the next day. So there, it's a much quicker timeframe for stuff like that, and then if they are disconnected, they have to pay up to a certain amount over so that we. Can keep them from possibly having been disconnected. Quickly again, since it is a prepaid service, so it's basically like fill up the car, don't put in five dollars to get up, you know, to get two gallons, we're gonna ask you to. You know, fill it up at least halfway, stuff like that.
It does change the user experience for the customer, because if you come over, you use the mobile. Girl and they switch over to. Flex pay app instead of writing.
Correct, they have a separate app, a separate website, um, things like that, so.
Our our website?
Go to.
And just go to flex pack.
Go to W W W dot my usage dot com.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, he could just pull up our website, it's our website.
We have some documents out there that we can just.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
So that's my usage, but I just wanted them to see what's on our website. Oh, like you were talking.
Yes.
You said there's some.
And I think there, I think there's even a couple of videos, may, maybe, there were.
There were. But see, th- this is what's on the website, that I just pulled up.
Right there, there's additional documents in that green box.
Yeah, that would seem like a.
Place.
Yeah.
You could add that document.
Alright.
Can you guys send the short. There's my usage right there.
Hold on, tho- those are not reflective of flex pay. Like, there's no paperless billing for flex pay, there's no understanding your bill for flex pay, so those uh. Are a little misleading.
Rose wanted the document.
Is there something that that will prevent us from adding a link there to open up the application?
No, uh, to open an application?
A link for people to.
Review it, review the whole document?
Yeah, the review.
No, no, there should be.
There should be nothing to keep us to.
There's need to pay on the right place.
Yeah, right, right.
It's under. Learn how flex pay works, there's a video that's there. So there is some.
That one's gonna expand.
It sounds like, Rose, tell me if I'm wrong, as long as we can put a link to it that alleviates the concern here.
Well.
We put it out there.
Yeah.
So if you could send it to the policy committee, that would be great.
Yeah. You have that.
The highlights?
Yeah.
I just sent it.
And then in the policy itself.
Rob, we'll send it to you, is that good?
And then you'll send it out with the updated.
You can send it out to the group.
Uh, no, you'll need to send it to Ange, cause I send the updated policy to Angela, I'm not allowed to, you'll direct. Alright, so go to.
If you send it to me, I will send it, do you want it to go to every, all the board members or just the committee?
Committee.
Committee first?
Committee.
I think the committee.
And our group here, okay.
Agreed.
And what what we're gonna send you is this, the agreement that the reps read to the customer why we are for them to accept to go on it.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, there's more information.
Yeah.
For the, the back end of it. So for that one bullet about uh. They must agree to the service agreement, you just want us to put it out on the website, but just that bullet's still good?
I think that bullet needs to reflect what the hyperlink will be, but sure.
Okay. So basically just have the service agreement, have it highlighted, and you click on that, it would take you to that agreement. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd work.
That makes sense, Rose?
I just, I was sad to know provide hyperlink to the agreement.
Yeah, so basically like the, or service agreement, that just make that a hyperlink, and then they could click on that and take it right to them, yep.
My meter allow them to move from postpaid to flex pay or not?
So they they can't be in both, they can only be in one or the other, so when they sign up for flex pay, their account and, I mean, it will get shut down and their.
My user. Will my meter allow them to move from postpaid to flex pay?
What do you mean move? He wants to know if they can sign a flex pay via my accounts. As of now, I don't think that functionality is out there.
No, that is something we could look at, yes.
Okay. We had talked before about when, if we put the application out there to have both items out there and it allows the customer to choose when they're signing up for service. Um, but that, that was a few years ago, it's never can do it.
Yeah, we could work on that as well.
Okay, okay.
As we've asked about other programs, do we know how many people are on flex pay?
Fourteen hundred. One thousand four hundred.
Okay.
Give or, give or take a handful.
Seem to be, seem to be stuck there, Tom.
Yeah, we need to get more people on it.
Yeah.
Say.
If we, if. What I, my, my thing has been for a while, if we want more people on it. We offer everybody flex pay, that is, when they sign up. There's no deposit, no disconnection fees unless it's a water, everything, everyone is.
We were offering everybody that when they call in to sign up, there's options.
But what I would say is that is, we 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 would offer to put everybody on.
He's saying that flex pay would be the default.
Flex pay would be the default, and then if the customer says, no, I don't want that, you have something else, then we say, okay, well, we have this postpaid option, which is what normal billing is. I'm not getting it. Subject to a uh credit check and possible deposit, I've got you and stuff, so. Yeah, with, with that, we find out uh very quickly, within six months or so, how good they are at keeping their balance above zero, how many disconnects they receive and. Things like that and stuff, so like I said, there's no deposit.
This may be another, maybe another area to talk to Excel, because they've asked us. Ask me, hey, can we assist you with growing your flex pay accounts? So if we go back and, if we go back and have a conversation with them to say, how have other utilities grown these accounts? And learn something, possibly learn something. I would be interested in that. Think they've even altered incentives. That's.
And that's what I was just saying, that they incentivize them to.
Right.
Move to flex space, but just to.
That will be P, B, B P U, that will be them. They would be up to one back end too, so that's something we can circle back on.
What they had said to.
Well, yeah, after that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then we are done with all sections, Rob?
Well, we, I don't know if we've done everything, you're right for the section, was there anything else? These last bullets that we wanted to look at? Uh, so we went to the, we called out I B R, so we're ready to find that as above, what did we do? I think you just made a note to put it in the definition.
Yeah, I think you just left it in there, we, we took it out and then put it back.
We didn't hyphenate online last time, so I think we should match.
Rose, so what, what are, what are our next steps?
I've got one question on the second to last bullet, the substantive bullet, not the, not the payment option. Um, that last part. That says the percentage of their payment that will be applied to debt recovery may be twenty five percent. Wha- what exactly does that mean?
Could be up to. So, no.
No.
So, with, as you know, with most of our customers now are ones that have been disconnected. So let's say that they owed us a thousand, uh, they said they can pay five hundred, so they still owe us five hundred. That five hundred dollars will go into uh debt recovery, kind of, consider it kind of like a loan. Uh, so they will be making, every time they make a payment, so they pay a hundred dollars. Twenty five dollars that will go towards that five hundred dollars that they owe us. Now, if the customer, or as of right now. Oh, my friends are there, okay. Oh, no, it's, they're coming from back here, so I, I, I'm sorry.
They're sitting up, sorry.
Thank you, uh, so like right now, we're getting a lot of people with tax refunds, so they are putting more towards their debt, so. They do that, and then they call, they call in and say, I just paid four hundred dollars, I would like three hundred or all of that or whatever to go to that amount, so then we will. Manually make that modification, but. The twenty five percent is just a standard amount that it's, when it gets over there and that's what's uh put towards the debt.
Now, I will say this. If we receive some type of uh. Agency commitment, then agency commitment will go to pay. Not prepaid account, an agency commitment should go to pay off your. Yes, so I do want you to know that if it doesn't do the twenty five percent, we can put all of that, because that is what it was for, they say, we have this outstanding bill, can you assist me? We don't just leave that outstanding bill, because that's what a commitment is for.
And I do check that like every two weeks to, to validate those.
Oh, yeah, finish.
I was just saying, for agents' commitments, late payments, stuff like that, I do find those accounts, send them to collections and just say which ones of these are ones that we then can put towards a debt.
So marked earlier, uh. Explanation clear, or there's still questions? So if you got a hundred dollar bill, you're paying a hundred dollars, twenty five dollars go to pay off your old debt.
Correct.
Seventy five dollars goes toward to pay off you.
If you pay forty dollars, ten will go to the debt, thirty to your balance.
Is there reasons made?
For the fact of if they want more to go to.
Sorry.
Yes.
As well as we came up with that percent. If we chose to change it to. Seventy thirty, I mean, there, there's flexibility, we, as we, as we built out our program, that was pretty, pretty much the industry standard, but uh, as remember, Karen, some utilities do a different amount. Say, say seventy thirty.
Some do fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty, so. We, so, yeah.
I think, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think we want with whatever. Their standard was, because. You know, when you look at the B P U bill, it's not just a B P U bill, like all, most of the other utility, we got all these U G charges on there.
Right.
Okay, so not only are they paying this, they're, they're paying part of that, which they're also behind on as well.
We went with the one that was used most frequently by their other utilities, yep.
Flex pay only website, or is there also?
There's an app.
Okay, should we specify, because we only have the website called out in policy?
That would be good, because there was no app at that time.
Separate website and call out.
Correct.
Rose, is that helpful?
It is, but I think this is one of the bullets that. It's likely gonna benefit from probably putting an example there, because I don't know that that's something we can co- cover in actual verbiage.
So when you say an example, are you talking about the example of what debt recovery is, or example of how the payment would be broken out?
The example of how the payment would be broken out.
Okay, and then we.
Just explain.
Okay, and then we, do we, probably can define debt recovery in the terms, but. They never call.
Yeah, possibly.
I know, I mean.
Is that too much?
Yep. I'm sorry, what?
She said it's possibly, so I didn't, she wanted that.
I mean, we do have it in the form, we will send you the highlights, we do break it out exa- in in that form.
That may be enough, right?
Could be, maybe.
Yeah, could be. Could be.
The only thing is the question about what's the debt recovery.
Okay, so. I, we've got seven minutes left and we've gotta figure out next steps here, so. Uh, Tom and Brett, I'll, I'll certainly defer to you as to. As to, you know, to offer any input on this, but. Um. Now that we have, have done one run through the entire document. I know I'm gonna wanna go back and review it in its entirety. And.
Yep.
Likely. You know. I, I know that I have areas where I have committed to. Doing revisions in the document itself, and so I don't know if it's beneficial for. Uh, you know. Certainly want you guys to go through the document and, you know, make any additional comments. You, you know, that you guys have on any sections. But what I don't want is to have obviously multiple um versions of the document running with multiple folks, right?
Right.
Thank you. Rose, I am.
Well, I. Go ahead, Brett.
I was just gonna say, I'm more than happy to. Do my read through now that we've been through without editing anything, I can just, I prefer handwritten notes anyway, so. I'm happy to do that without touching anything, and I know you've been. Committed to doing some of those revisions as well, so.
Yep.
I guess I won't be stepping on your toes on that, I'll, I'll look through it, but I'm not changing anything.
You wanna clean cups too, red line and clean?
Sorry.
Do you want a red line and clean, just to make it ea- uh easier reading?
This uh without the changes accepted, and then I will go through and accept all of the changes and create an updated version, um, so yes, I'll provide two versions, but I'll save this in case we ever need to go back.
And you'll email it out.
I'll email it to Angela to have her email it out to everybody else.
Okay.
And Angela.
Then we can go over.
Oh, I'm sorry, couldn't hear either one of you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
No, I was just, uh. I, I, like you, I'd like to have both versions.
What were you gonna say, Rose?
I, I said the same thing, Tom said.
Okay, great, excellent.
I will only make new revision on the clean version, can we, are you guys good with that?
Well, as long as you guys make revisions on your own, and then we come back together as a group to get them into a single document, I think we'll be fine.
Works for me.
You don't want them all to send you separate ones?
I would not like them to send them to me, I would like to do it in a live meeting, otherwise there's a chance that I'll get confused between time.
Okay.
Um, and I, I think this is gonna require some time to, to do this, to do this review and to do additional input, so looking at the calendar, I don't. I, you know, I don't know what the next um. I don't know how, how soon we're looking at.
I can commit to getting the clean version, sorry, Rose. I can commit to getting the clean version and the red line version out by the middle of next week. And how much time do you guys need to uh review? Weeks, three weeks, four?
I, I'm gonna need a while on it, um. So I, I would propose that we don't reconvene. Until Ap- April nineteenth at the earliest. Which is a Friday.
Would you be okay, well, pending everyone else's schedule, if we push that to twenty sixth?
I would be, uh, actually welcome that.
Is there a holiday?
No. Not a B P U one. With Fridays, this next Friday. We don't have anything till tomorrow, but.
So we're good to reconvene on April twenty sixth, same time, nine to twelve.
That works with staff. Nine to twelve.
Yes, for me.
I'm available.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay.
Alright, thanks guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, we need to adjourn the meeting, right? I've moved.
Second.
Okay, all, uh, roll call.
Roll call, Groneman.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Love Amy Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries this, uh, work session is, or committee session is adjourned.
Okay. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, guys.